Gene Fox, yes. Steve Owen, no. Sherri Baron, yes. Jen Blum, yes. Robert Clark, yes.
Yes.
Will Sankowitz, yes. Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Also present, we have Superintendent Strauss, Deirdre Farrell-Welch, Terry Fleming, and Ashley Floulay. And that's it.
Deirdre's here.
She is. There she is.
I didn't see her. Sorry. I just didn't see you.
And other than Lake Cam, is there anyone recording the meeting?
Yeah, the master meeting just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, you take the meeting over.
At this time, we are going to begin reorganization of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee after Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. It's not in that order.
I told you that.
I, the Pledge of Allegiance, to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, we would like to begin the reorganization by looking for votes for Chair.
I nominate Wilson for Chair.
Anyone second?
Second.
Let's vote by person. I guess I can call, I can do roll call, say aye or nay. Gene Fox?
Aye.
Sherri Baron?
Nay.
Jen Blum?
Aye.
Robert Clark?
Yeah.
John Burke?
Aye.
Will Sankowitz?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
I would abstain with a comment, though. I have reservations about doing this without the full committee present.
Don't we have him on Zoom?
Steve is not on yet. Let me see.
Understood. You made special arrangements. He's supposed to.
He wanted to hop on for Project.
Yep.
We can get him to come on for this.
I think I'm hearing from him.
So why don't we defer, come back?
Yep.
We will have Camille present to the school committee on all the wonderful things happening, including what's going on here in the library. Floor is yours, Camille.
So, this week is our school's Spirit Week. The whole thing throughout the week, we're also having it be a fundraiser for Jordan Gallagher, who's the daughter of staff at Freetown-Lakeville Middle School. She has a mutation of the self-two gene, which only affects 11 people in the world, and it's amazing that, like, it's affecting someone in our community. So, we're having a fundraiser for her, which is also going into the pep rally we're going to have on Friday.
Can you hear me?
Which is, we're going to have a miracle minute, and we're going to have students donate to a raffle, and all the money will be going to that organization. Also, this past week, at the beginning, we're having our DUCUS students in Orlando, and they're going to be flying back. And here in the library tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 8:00, we're going to be having our art show, which is going to feature people from all of the art classes, from Art I to AP Art and Mixed Media, Digital Art, and Healthy Living classes. And today, yesterday, and tomorrow, we had our Upon a Quip players do a performance of The Little Mermaid. They did songs, like, the popular ones, like, "Under the Sea," "Part of Your World." And we're going to be doing that again tomorrow. We're going to have the Greys kids come, and we're going to perform it to them. And it's going really well. We're going to have our show soon in May. And also, this weekend, there's going to be a local author expo happening in the library. It's going to be 11:00 to 2:00. We're going to have local authors come and share their books with all the people who are interested in coming. And we also had five students today who were honored at Independence Harbor as the academic All-Stars. We had Elizabeth Ashley, Jocelyn Carvalho, Owen Gallagher, Lucas Quinn, and Amurtha Santosh. And also, for academic scholar students, we had them sign by coaches. Earlier on Tuesday, we had Ethan Brown, Brian Vale, Amelia Keen, and Luke Richards. And finally, the next upcoming thing is going to be the AP tests, starting on May 1st, which are going to go over a span of two weeks, where we're going to have 191 students taking 366 exams over 16 different courses.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you very much.
Great job, Camille.
What time's the art show?
The art show's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00.
Thank you.
It'll also teach you ones and twos.
It's true.
Just to add to Camille's report, now that I don't have to do a superintendent report, because that's everything I was going to talk about. Nice job, Camille. The five athletic All-Stars that Camille mentioned, Ethan, Brian, Amelia, and Luke, signed their letters of intent, so they are scholar athletes who are going to be going to Bridgewater State, Hussin College, University of New England, and Franklin Pierce, and also play athletics. So that was a great, that was a great thing. Thank you, Camille. Great job.
Thank you.
As always.
You don't want to stay?
I don't know. I'm kind of hungry.
Oh, that happens. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Steve, can you hear us?
No, we can't hear anyone.
I can hear now, yep.
Ah, okay.
So now we can go back to the reorg. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. So why don't we go through roll again? Steve, just so you know, Bob Clark nominated Will to be Chair, so let's go through roll call to yea or nay. Gene Fox?
Aye.
Steve Owen?
Aye.
Sherri Baron?
Nay.
Jen Blum?
Aye.
Robert Clark?
Aye.
John Burke?
Aye.
Will Sankowitz?
Aye.
I don't know if you can vote for yourself.
Yeah, you can.
Steve Sylvia?
Can I still abstain? Is that a...
Of course.
Vice Chair?
I think takes all the meeting, though.
Yeah, so thank you, Alan. I appreciate that, and certainly appreciate the support of the committee. You know, this is a labor of love for us, and I do take this work very seriously, so I appreciate the nomination, and we'll continue to work as hard as I've worked in the past here. So, with that being said, I'll accept a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Steve Sylvia.
Second. I seconded.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, so we'll just go around. Doesn't sound good.
Steve, I think you have, do you have your phone on as well as your computer?
Nope, just the phone.
And the sound's not turned down on your computer?
Pardon me?
I'm not on the computer.
Okay, just the phone. Okay.
All right. So we'll just go around, I guess we'll start with Steve Owen. So Steve, we have a motion for Steve Sylvia to be Vice Chair at this point, which has been seconded. Yea or nay?
Steve Owen?
Aye.
John Burke?
Aye.
Jen Blum?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Can I abstain? Well, I should say. No.
Of course you can.
So one abstention. Sherri Baron?
Aye.
Gene Fox?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So we have unanimous there with one extension. Extension. Next up is District Clerk, I think.
I nominate Jen Blum.
I have a motion for Jen Blum to serve as District Clerk. Gene Fox has seconded it. Steve Owen?
Aye.
John Burke?
Aye.
Jen Blum?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Abstain.
Sherri Baron?
Aye.
Gene Fox?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
And I'll be an aye as well.
Now, Treasurer is a position that I previously held. I know, and Deirdre can probably speak to this, I know there's going to be probably a solid amount of transition that needs to be done with signing bank documents and getting things kind of turned over, so heads up, heads up there. I think they've kept me in that role previously, just to kind of ease that transition. So I'll entertain a motion at this point for Treasurer.
I nominate John Burke.
Second.
Okay, Steve Owen, we have a nomination for John Burke and a second, so yea or nay as far as John Burke for Treasurer?
Um, I'm going to say nay, because I don't believe that can be done.
Oh, I don't either. That's absolutely right, Steve.
That's a very, very good point.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Motion to withdraw the motion?
You abstained.
Well, no, I haven't.
Yeah, no, we should withdraw that.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to vote, so I would...
Okay. I withdraw. Okay.
Or I should say, I didn't get a chance to...
So still, so still entertaining a motion for Treasurer?
I nominate Gene Fox.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for Gene Fox for Treasurer at this point. Steve Owen?
All right, what's the motion, one more time?
Gene Fox?
Gene Fox for Treasurer?
Aye.
John Burke?
Aye.
Jen Blum?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Abstain.
Sherri Baron is an aye. Gene Fox?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Unanimous. Abstention. All right, now we're getting into subcommittees at this point.
Yep.
And the one thing I'd like to kind of just throw out there to the committee to think about as a whole is just equity, right? And just trying to kind of spread out your participation across committees. These do take a significant amount of time on top of our meetings, so the first, go ahead, Bob.
I would suggest that we keep the committees the same, if they're agreeing that those committees are willing, instead of going through the whole...
We can absolutely do that. The only thing is, I'm on a bunch of subcommittees, and I think as Chair, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, because you've done this, I'm a de facto member of...
Every one of them.
Of every one of them at this point, so we might have to just vote somebody in to replace me on the subcommittees that I sat on, and then we could keep everything the same if the committee is amenable to that.
Well, we should review who's on each one, I think, initially. Go ahead.
I have no objection to that, but there is, as Chair, does it preclude you from maintaining your positions on the subcommittee? But you are correct that you basically have a seat on all the committees as the Chair.
Correct. Okay. So then, in that case, Steve, we, I would potentially be open to voting them all to stay the same, but there may be some shifts we want to make from an equity standpoint.
And that's fine. We generally have tabled that to iron those out after the reorg.
That's right.
Okay.
Because there may be some shifts that we want to do internally as well.
Right.
We've really talked about it.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so that's TBD.
Okay. So that's TBD. I think we're, I think we're good at this point. So, thank you, everybody. I took copious notes. Next up on the agenda is Agenda Item 7, Acceptance of Minutes from 4/523. At this point, I will entertain a motion to accept.
We have to make superintendent's report? I don't have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you didn't have.
Well, I was teasing.
Oh, okay. Listen, we're on a rocky road at this point. We'll back up superintendent's report with Mr. Alan Strauss. Sorry, Alan.
Thank you, Will. A few things, again, much of what Camille talked about, the play is next weekend, May 5th and 6th, there are three shows, 7:00, 2:00, and 7:00. I want to thank Principal Penault and Principal Ward for hosting our kids today, our high school students. I heard it went fantastic, and tomorrow Greys is coming up to the high school, as Camille said, so we're looking forward to that. Couple of important things to discuss before I get into a longer discussion. Over break, with the support of the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Division of Cybersecurity and Infrastructure conducted a free security walkthrough of all five buildings over break. Final report will be sent to us within the next week. This is part of the work that we did with the gentleman named Kevin Hamm, and part of the work with Lorraine Carboni as part of the Security Committee. The purpose is to show the district areas that we can look at to tighten security even more. The Safer Schools Grant has not been distributed yet, and when it is, I'll report to the community. Again, this is intended to support our vestibule project at the remaining three campus schools. FES began in September and was completed in November. AES is within the MSBA project, which I know they're very excited about, to have their own new vestibule. Any questions on that? So we should have that report in two weeks.
Around here, we frequently, just affectionately, refer to it as SERPED.
SERPED. Right. That was, so...
That's one of the kinds that we do use, acronym doesn't understand.
One of the things I was told, do not use acronyms, so...
Very few people understand what that acronym is, so it was nice that you spelled it out, but you can go SERPED from now on.
From now on, I'll do it. Okay. I had mentioned, as part of our security concerns, we had talked early in the year about signage in the district, that buildings, in my opinion, needed to say no trespassing. Not trying to hurt anybody's feelings, but we need to do one more step to keep people safe. This sign, which I'm about to show everybody, and I'm purposely bringing it because I want the community to see it on Lake Cam, is being put up over the next week or so. Greg is just getting some more. There will be two metal posts into cement, so they will be pretty solid. They will be going up at, there are four at each school, FES and AES, so around your campus. There will be at every entrance, at the middle school, at Greys, at the high school, by the tennis courts, by the track, throughout the district, and we can always order more. I think they came out great, but I wanted the community to see them. Will, if you would read it, just because it's behind me.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. School business only while school is in session. No trespassing, including athletic practices, no trespassing dusk till dawn. Per order of the superintendent of schools, please take notice.
So this was created by, I worked with both Chief Abbott and Chief, wow.
Parkins?
Parkins, thank you. Sorry, Matt. And we needed the wording specifically to say, per order superintendent and please take notice, so that they could then give out tickets or do any of that. The good news is, principals only have to let the SRO know, and then it's taken care of. So the SRO will be going up to people, not building principals. So that's an advantage for you. Not that you're dealing with it much, but it certainly makes things a little bit easier. Okay? So that's, we're excited about that. New stop signs have gone up. I don't know if any of you have seen them, starting at the high school parking lot. There will be more coming up. Traffic is interesting, I'm going to just put it that way. People stop occasionally, and so now we are putting up eight more stop signs throughout the district, so that certainly will be helpful for parking. People might get a little cranky. The MSBA project is heading into its next steps, and I thank Principal Penault for sending out a letter to parents, but I just wanted to reconfirm that there are five interior windows that were taken out as part of the, what are the next steps, what does it look like inside the walls, all of that. They have been plugged up with what's known as window plugs and Tyvek. They are safe, and they are interior windows, not exterior windows where people can come in. We thought that was really important. We recently attended the DESI Virtual Job Fair, and will be attending the Bridgewater State Job Fair next week. Our focus is on those positions where we have resignations and retirements. It is vitally important that we get ahead of the train with this, to hire the best people possible. We will be fiscally responsible, and I have given that message to our principals, that we are looking at, you know, what we say is fair. Masters and two or three years of experience. We don't have positions like we did last year with physics, for example, where you're going to get what you're going to get. So we're excited about that. We are looking into MPDE, which is the Massachusetts Partnership in Diversity Education. They have a job fair, which amongst their many projects, is to help districts across the Commonwealth hire and retain faculty of color, which is something that I think is vitally important for us. So you will hear me talk about MPDE, its meetings we have to go to, they're no longer virtual, but it's work that I did previously, and it's a great network. We're fighting Boston, we're fighting Brockton, we're fighting Fall River. As wonderful as we are, we're not going to get people of diverse backgrounds unless we go out and recruit. So that is coming up, so we're excited about that. With that, before I start my conversation about our last meeting, Gene, you have a letter from the NAACP, or, I'm sorry, Will, you have a letter from the NAACP?
I do, yes, sir. So I'll just, I'll just read it. This was a letter sent from us by Rene Ledbetter, the Branch President of the New Bedford NAACP.
Who spoke here last week?
Who spoke here last week. We've had multiple meetings with her and Alan and school officials, and they've been wonderfully collaborative, and she's been phenomenal to work with. So I just wanted to take a quick second here to read this. It says, Dear Superintendent Strauss, we would like to thank you again as we continue to work on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts as a nation. The NAACP New Bedford Branch are committed to collaborating with Freetown-Lakeville School District. Critical race theory does not appear in K-12 curriculums and is not being proposed. Creating welcoming classrooms and critical thinkers is not indoctrinating students with critical race theory. It is teaching our children well. And that is in quotes, I don't know where the quote came from, but for the, for the reading. Many children already understand systematic racism and systematic sexism, classism, and heterosexuality. Because they experience it, and because they are developing critical thinking skills, many of these students and parents in our districts have spoken in front of their school boards about their experiences of discrimination in their schools and communities, which should immediately encourage administrators to begin or accelerate DEI efforts. In collaboration with Superintendent Strauss, the NAACP New Bedford Branch will work to maintain the mission that we have before us, which is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. The Freetown-Lakeville District has captured a great leader that has, in the past, in other districts, led the district in DEI, and I am confident, working together as a community, Superintendent Strauss can move this district forward. Sincerely, Rene Ledbetter, Branch President.
So our last meeting, a number of people got up and spoke passionately about experiences that they have had here in the district. And I felt similar to, after we had the situation, the safety situation, it was important that I address what we have done and work we need to do. You all know me well enough, I'm not one to generally read things, but I think it's important that I read this statement. In my first year here, I've met so many incredibly kind, open, and inclusive people that clearly know and live daily what inclusive and equitable systems look like. I was very impressed prior to applying here when I researched the mission statement from 2002, which included honor in all, as it spoke of inclusivity long before the term was in vogue. In fact, it's one of the major reasons I applied. Yet I have also spent my life learning and understanding that true diversity, equity, and inclusion is absolutely not found in any mission statement without complete dedication to ensuring that belonging is not a word, rather, it is a non-negotiable belief system. This was evidenced by the young man who spoke here last meeting and stated that in 2009, he barely survived emotionally due to the emotional ridicule and torment he faced daily, and again by the parents who passionately spoke. For the last five years, they have felt frustrated and unheard. DEI work is found in a long-term, complex, centered, and balanced approach to ensuring success for all students. It is not a buffet where someone picks and chooses what they like, what they want to digest, and tosses aside anything unappealing to them. It is all-inclusive, it is non-stop, it is non-negotiable. It is a very detailed and long process that does not have checkboxes and weekly check-ins. An article I sent to the leadership team today, and I want to commend them on their absorbing the multitude of articles and suggestions that I send to them on a weekly basis, and they're laughing over there, spoke of the concern that Autism Awareness Month is ending in a few days. Therefore, the question we must truly ask is, did we have Autism Awareness Month, or did we move the needle towards autism acceptance? DEI is the latter. Checking boxes is the former. There cannot be acceptance without awareness, but there cannot be any change without acceptance. Acceptance is a commitment, emotionally, programmatically, and financially. Awareness is wearing a color. It must be understood that this work is also a community effort in conjunction with a school effort. The great line is so true. Discrimination is not born, it is taught. Two-year-olds hate vegetables, or naps, not people. The approach is a multi-dimensional process. Anything done quickly that is permanent is a very small move of the needle. I know this because as DEI Director previously, as well as high school principal, it took 12 months, after three years of creating affinity spaces for students, training leadership in... other districts, led the district in DEI, and I am confident, working together as a community, Superintendent Strauss can move this district forward. Sincerely, Rene Ledbetter, Branch President.
So our last meeting, a number of people got up and spoke passionately about experiences that they have had here in the district. And I felt similar to, after we had the situation, the safety situation, it was important that I address what we have done and work we need to do. You all know me well enough, I'm not one to generally read things, but I think it's important that I read this statement. In my first year here, I've met so many incredibly kind, open, and inclusive people that clearly know and live daily what inclusive and equitable systems look like. I was very impressed prior to applying here when I researched the mission statement from 2002, which included honor in all, as it spoke of inclusivity long before the term was in vogue. In fact, it's one of the major reasons I applied. Yet I have also spent my life learning and understanding that true diversity, equity, and inclusion is absolutely not found in any mission statement without complete dedication to ensuring that belonging is not a word, rather, it is a non-negotiable belief system. This was evidenced by the young man who spoke here last meeting and stated that in 2009, he barely survived emotionally due to the emotional ridicule and torment he faced daily, and again by the parents who passionately spoke. For the last five years, they have felt frustrated and unheard. DEI work is found in a long-term, complex, centered, and balanced approach to ensuring success for all students. It is not a buffet where someone picks and chooses what they like, what they want to digest, and tosses aside anything unappealing to them. It is all-inclusive, it is non-stop, it is non-negotiable. It is a very detailed and long process that does not have checkboxes and weekly check-ins. An article I sent to the leadership team today, and I want to commend them on their absorbing the multitude of articles and suggestions that I send to them on a weekly basis, and they're laughing over there, spoke of the concern that Autism Awareness Month is ending in a few days. Therefore, the question we must truly ask is, did we have Autism Awareness Month, or did we move the needle towards autism acceptance? DEI is the latter. Checking boxes is the former. There cannot be acceptance without awareness, but there cannot be any change without acceptance. Acceptance is a commitment, emotionally, programmatically, and financially. Awareness is wearing a color. It must be understood that this work is also a community effort in conjunction with a school effort. The great line is so true. Discrimination is not born, it is taught. Two-year-olds hate vegetables, or naps, not people. The approach is a multi-dimensional process. Anything done quickly that is permanent is a very small move of the needle. I know this because as DEI director previously, as well as high school principal, it took 12 months, after three years of creating affinity spaces for students, training leadership and staff, working with community partners, as well as getting support from a school committee, who included in their own, on their own, their own training, to write a complete guide on how the district would become focused on belonging for all students. This is not a quick fix. Any plan includes systematically looking at all data, reviewing all policies, hiring practices, professional development, ensuring curriculum is culturally relevant, developing individual school equity teams driven by the principals and staff who are focused on DEI work, personal reconciliation with one's own beliefs, as well as multiple other factors. We began this work this summer with all of our principals, assistant principals, and district leaders, who almost unanimously said, thank you, we needed this, we need to understand more, and we have never been exposed. Never exposed as a group is not their fault, and they are diligently working to learn all they can. It does, however, reconnect to the words on a piece of paper talking about belonging and action that needs to support it. The work continued with each school devoting to start one faculty meeting focused only on belonging, with another one coming. Choice PD for all staff, where many opted to attend and left asking for more. School councils have been surveyed, and along with rigor and safety, diversity and inclusion was the most important focus. We finally have a website that has multiple languages for all of our families who would prefer them, and USAR engaged and empowered ELA team last school committee meeting from the middle school speak with such pride and excitement over the potential new curriculum that included a diversity focus for students. Our caring teachers want this and are excited. For the first time, all school improvement plans include a DEI and belonging work, and you will hear some of that tonight. We must not teach what to believe, and I'm going to repeat that. We must not teach what to believe, but we must teach, there is no room ever in our house, here within FLRSD, for words that promote sexism, body shaming, racism, antisemitism, the R, B, or N word, or any other demonstration of hate speech. This work is multi-tiered, it is heavy, it is rewarding, and most importantly, it is our duty to ensure our students feel a true sense of belonging. Yet it is not a simple fix. If it were, we would develop it, sell it to everybody, and make millions of dollars. The diversity coalition that started in the middle of last year took this entire year, led by Mr. Ward, to come up with a wonderful mission statement, and last night finalized their first draft. I consistently saw a small group of caring, passionate, and proactive people who want to ensure all students feel supported and cared for. If we as a district are going to truly become inclusive, we must have more voices, all voices, including those we disagree with, at the table. Equity is not simply sitting at the table, it's having a voice at the table. Not simply told in a mission statement that students are important. We will get there. I am absolutely confident in this district, and it's why I'm so proud to be part of this leadership team.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions from the committee?
I just want to make a comment.
Sure.
The superintendent did share with me some of the data that was collected in his prior position that was quite moving and an excellent place to start.
Yeah, so we're looking at that. Ally Cassidy is doing a great job looking at data trends over the last 10 years on everything.
Everything.
It's not about MCAS scores, it's everything. That's going to open a lot of eyes, without question. Without question, that's where we start.
Sherri.
I want to thank you very much for that statement. As you know, I sent an email about a week ago to the former chairs and to you, CC to you, because I've been very concerned we haven't heard anything about this. If there is information, could you send it to all eight information that Jean's talking about, all eight members?
Yeah, I simply say-
It was in response to something I had forwarded.
Yeah, I was looking at potential examples. The information I sent was from a previous district where I was DEI director. I will send, obviously, all information in regard to what's going on here will be sent.
Well, that was kind of what I was asking for in my email.
Absolutely.
And an action plan that we would all know about, so that-
Yeah, I mean-
Because it's been very quiet for the last two weeks, and I didn't know that anything was happening. I did attend DEI for, I'll be at a short time last night. And I was very impressed with Mr. Ward and what he was doing.
It is-
So thank you, Mr. Ward.
It is important to understand that work has been going on since we first started.
And that's what I didn't understand.
Right.
So when people come up and speak to us, and we hadn't heard anything-
Yep.
It got me concerned that, you know, we need to get started on this. I did not know that this was all happening. Maybe the others did, but I didn't. So I think it needs to go out to the entire committee.
So I think, you know, I want to go back to, sometimes it's much smaller than people think, and I'm going to be very open and honest about, I sent out an email to our principals, who are fantastic, and simply said, it's Ramadan. We need to let our staff know what Ramadan is all about, and we have students who may not want to run in class because they're going to be sweaty and tired and can't drink. We talked about Passover, and we're going to do the same thing for Yom Kippur, and for all holidays, for Kwanzaa. Jehovah's Witnesses don't celebrate, and so therefore, what are we going to do? Because I am not a person who is going to sit as superintendent and say, we push away everything. We include everything. And so therefore, we have to, we have been involved in this work from the beginning, and I apologize to the principals, because I know I sometimes push it, but that's not, I'll be honest, I don't think much has been done over the last few years, and I'm not-
No.
And so, but we will do it consistently.
We have to move to budget quickly. I just heard from Steve that he's going to have to hop off.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just say one last thing?
Sure.
Could it be that we have a placeholder on the agenda once a month to just get up to speed on what has been done?
It's possible that the answer may be nothing for this month.
Well, that's fine. I mean, that's fine, but-
Yeah, I have no problem with my report.
We can just get a little bit more details, because it's hard when our constituencies are standing in front of us and are angry. And I don't know how to solve that.
Right.
You do.
Understand their anger has been years, it hasn't been 10 months.
Right.
And until we realize that, we're going to go backwards.
But we can't go back to years, so we're going to start right now, making sure that we are informing everyone, please. Sorry. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, with that being said, given that we're going to lose Steve, I just want to kind of reorganize the agenda here a little bit. If we could take 10A out of order here, and then we can kind of circle back to accepting the minutes, and then public participation, so bear with me. And I'm totally cognizant of the school improvement plans and getting our leadership team out of here at a decent time as well. So, so moving on to 10A, the FY23 budget update, and Deirdre, this I believe is your first presentation to the committee, so-
Welcome.
Thank you. My first presentation to the committee in regards to FY23 budget update was really incorporated within my director's report. My apologies, I didn't separate it. However, I can tell you that from Kara's April 5 report that you received in your packet, we've had one accounts payable warrant posted, and the staff is currently working on catching up on revenue posting. So I don't have too much of an update from that April 5 sheet and presentation that Kara did for you. I can tell you, you'll hear a little bit in my director's report about how we're moving forward in the current fiscal year, closing out the fiscal year. We're in our fourth quarter, we're rolling down from utilities, winter, hiring, substitutes, those kinds of things. So my focus, quite frankly, is to take Kara's April 5 report and use that as my baseline as I work with staff in the business office, ensuring that we are working together in closing out the fiscal year.
Great.
The superintendent has the budget update, though.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the page. Do you have a copy of it?
The FY23?
No, the latest assessment.
The assessment that was discussed at Regional FinCom?
That was going to be discussed at Regional FinCom.
Yes.
But the meeting was closed.
Yes.
Can you pass that down?
Yes. I have eight copies. I should have made more, my apologies, but I have eight.
And welcome, Deirdre.
Thank you.
You've been wonderful. So after lots of conversations, and I truly mean lots of conversations, and listening to both the town and their concerns, as well as making sure that we are doing what's best for our students, we have made the decision, in conjunction with Meredith Foy, with Ashley, with Mike Ward, to delete the FES preschool teacher from our budget. We feel that we are okay with the numbers. I certainly, this isn't my first choice, I'm going to be very open about that, but numbers right now, we're okay. And providing services for our students anyway is part of the work that we're going to do, so we're looking to change that. And then we are looking to cost share the special education team chair. 60% of it coming from 94-142, which is IDEA. That is a permanent, and I want that to be stated to Lake Cam, that is a permanent grant. That is not taken every year, and they say, okay, we're not going to have it. That's a federal grant that a district will fall apart if we do not have IDEA, 94-142. In 25 years, we have never gotten less money, we've always gotten more money from it, we don't know what the money will be yet, but we have enough to cover it. So we will go 60% through 94-142, and 40% through the general funds. Without getting into a lot of specifics, this is not unusual. We have a number of positions that are being paid through that, including one of our other team chairs. So I do think at another time, we're going to sit down and have a conversation, Deirdre and I were talking about it, to talk about all grants, so that the school committee is fully aware of what grants are out there and what we're utilizing. With that, what that does is it leaves the assessment for the town of Free Town at an increase of $99,922 for 0.77%, and for Lakeville, $251,288 for an increase of 1.55%. Overall increase, 1.20%, the lowest that we've had that we can find in 14 years. I am still comfortable, although I would prefer the FES preschool teacher, I am comfortable that this still will allow us to do some of the things we need to do. We have kept in the adjustment counselor at Gray's, and we have kept in the two paraprofessionals, which obviously are compliance. So that is my recommendation, and now it's school committee. Questions?
Jean.
I don't like losing the preschool teacher either, I'm just going to be very honest about that. It's very tough to go back to the well after the fact. And I think that the real losers on that would be more your model students than the, from your data, that, and by the way, I have never seen data so comprehensive and wonderful as what you have been producing, Ashley, so thank you for that. Because of that data, I'm nervous about it. And I'm just putting it out there.
Sherri.
I absolutely agree with what you're saying, and those are our youngest kids, and we all know that if we can catch them early, that we may be able to help them even greater. So that is a big concern to me. I also, the 94-142, what have we been funding with that now that, if I'm right, that $45,000, 60% of that salary would be coming out? Are we losing anything for that $45,000?
You mean, are we pushing something aside?
Yes.
We're looking a little bit at supplies.
Contracted services.
And contracted services. Yep.
Contracted services such as-
Do you want to talk about? Sherri has a question.
Yeah, so we use the contracted services line to help fund evaluations and support staff through, excuse me, local collaboratives, and then we use supplies to help fund anything that the teachers may need in the classroom, technology. But again, we also use it to fund salaries for staff, some at even 100%.
I know.
So, again, I think it's something that we have to look at in a way, and we do have other places we can pull for contracted services and supplies through other grants, so I think that it's a smart move.
It's also a federal grant, and the push for federal money right now, through educational associations, through MAST, through every association, that we can push the advocacy for federal money for early childhood education. We have not had 94-142 increases for years, and with COVID relief money going away, with so many districts in the country focused on early childhood, the push for early childhood money out of 94-142 and your titles is significant, and those will go through August 31st. So there's still time to get those monies, hopefully, to replenish any contracted services. But as Ashley's indicated, there are other spots we may be able to at least cover those smaller contracted services costs, or expenses, rather, excuse me.
So you feel comfortable losing these contracted positions if that were the worst-case scenario? Let's talk about the worst case.
We wouldn't be losing them.
I'd love to hear your optimism.
We would just have to be a little bit more careful with our spending.
Okay. My other question?
All right.
AP exams, are they still in our budget? And should they be? Maybe that's a question.
No, we'll remove them.
They have been removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Much to my dismay.
I agree. I agree.
I'm not.
But-
You know, I think that's a part parents deserve, but-
Are our two pairs, AES?
That's compliance. So those are one-to-one pairs.
They are, that's right, I just want to make sure. And the guidance is staying, and do we still have the IT Chromebooks coming out of?
The $150,000?
E&amp;D?
Yes.
E&amp;D, coming out of E&amp;D. I guess that's-
Yeah, great. John?
Just back to the FES preschool teacher. I was curious if we knew if we had a number.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We're okay with the amount of positions based on the projections right now? Is it a different story with, you know, five students, or?
So we've been put, if I'm going to be direct, one of the statements that has frustrated myself, I can't speak for Ashley, has been the lack of support towards projections that we have heard incessantly. And so, we are actually using that approach, that because we cannot project out, that's why we're going to cut. So people ask for, stop using projections, so we're going to stop using projections, and this is what happens, it cuts out. So it cannot be both ways. Would I prefer it? I said that right in the beginning. But based upon, right now, where we are numbers-wise, and speaking with Mike, and speaking with Meredith, we can handle it. What happens down the road, I cannot answer that question.
Thanks, thank you. Sherri.
What are our preschool numbers right now coming in for children of needs?
I can't predict that for the fall right now, because again, evaluations haven't happened yet.
Right.
So I didn't prepare numbers today, because there have only been seven school days from our last meeting, so there were really no updates to present. But looking at my previous school committee report, they will show current numbers, I think we were at about 3940, and that's me guessing, because I don't have my previous report in front of me. But that's all students, that's not just the students in our integrated preschool program. So we have three available spaces in one section currently at the given time, and two available spaces in the other section. So like Alan said, right now, we have space where we can still fill with either special ed or role model students. But to say with confidence that come September, August, September, that we're going to be at capacity, or we're going to need another classroom section, I can't, again, it's not something I can predict, because there are so many factors that are unpredictable that can happen between now and August.
It's pretty scary.
I would agree.
That's special ed.
Steve Sylvia, and then I want to make sure that Steve Owen, even though you're virtually, I know if I was going to bet my house, you have some questions, so I just want to be able to have some time for you as well. But Steve Sylvia, first.
Thanks, Will. Two things, a comment on the team administrative position, I'm glad we were able to do that, but also, that's a creative solution that I think is conscientious to what the towns were presenting at a recent meeting. Second, on that preschool position, what would the impact be on the budget on that in terms of, what would-
$55,041.
And-
Minimum, right?
And is-
Yeah, assuming that we, yes, right.
And then obviously built out over a couple of years, but would the- But would there be any benefit to potentially a .5 position? I just don't know the structure of the preschool.
I think that, you know, a .5 position would be a good compromise. I don't know who we would find. We might be lucky, especially if we were able to post now. But from what I'm understanding, we have to make these cuts because we need to make everything on our end work with what the town is willing to provide with us or for us.
Yeah, and I think it's to be proud of the assessments. You said 14 years. I haven't been here that long, but, I mean, less than 1% to Free Town, and it is quite something. So, you know, congratulations to the team of putting that together. Deirdre, you must have had the magic touch at the end, but that is something.
Clearly been done by an extraordinary team and dedicated.
Yeah, no, I want to.
Coming in and just being able to find things that are just incredible to see, so.
No, we heard a lot about sustainability. And I think to present a budget with the assessments at that level is something to be proud of. So I appreciate the work of the entire team. But a .5 position or something with an impact like that, I mean.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. I think also, it's important to understand that under 1%, considering we have all our bargaining unit contracts signed, and we had to go up in insurance. I'm incredibly proud of it. And whether or not we are concerned about other districts around us, I am. I know people say they're not, but numbers are much higher all the way around. And I'm very proud of that.
Steve, can you hear us?
Yeah, again, I just have just two things. Yep, there's been a lot of great work into this. I am concerned this budget comes with a lot of risk. There's a lot of unknowns in this. I speak for myself, but this is not a level services budget. I don't think we do enough for all of the students, and that's what our job is. I know we're focusing on some of the high needs and what have you, but I don't think this budget does that. And I just want to make one statement on, you know, there's been a lot of talk about sustainability. And I know there was talk about, let's use, you know, a fall town meeting as a funding source. While I appreciate the towns mentioning that, but we can't talk about a fall town meeting as a funding source and sustainability at the same time. Because instantly, anything that comes out of the fall town meeting or a funding source is already not sustainable. So, but I just want to make those quick two statements and that thanks everybody for their supporting and getting this budget where it is.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. And I certainly echo your sentiments. I mean, I sat here a couple of meetings ago and I said, I feel like as a committee, and again, I'm still waiting for the towns to step up and kind of be, they've been calling for transparency. I would like the same from them. Because I've said it meeting after meeting, that I feel like we're sitting up here and we're cutting off our nose despite our face. We're continuing to cut, continuing to cut, continuing to cut. But we're not necessarily getting the feedback from the towns that we need, right? So I'm happy we've gotten it to this point. I'm not thrilled, the fact that we're cutting out a pre-K position. But those are just my two cents. But tremendous work on behalf of the entire team. I certainly can speak on behalf of the committee. We appreciate all of your hard work. So thank you there. Anything else pertaining to the FY '23 budget? Sherri?
Can I make a motion that we put in monies for a .5 preschool teacher? In case we need it?
For a .5?
.5. That this day was talking about, for a half-time. I'm not sure if we can get a half-time teacher either, but I'm beginning to think we could. There are people out there that are looking for.
We do it early, I think.
I'm just, I don't want to see us not be able to service those youngest children. The early childhood that Deirdre was just talking about.
I think the advantage of that.
If we made a motion.
The advantage of that is if you have somebody in place, Mr. Ward or whomever, when they're doing their interviewing, kind of listens for, would they be interested in full-time? Because you don't want to hire two people. And kind of keep that in the back of your mind, Mr. Ward, as you and Meredith are doing that work. Then if we do have more students, it's solved. Again, I want everybody to understand, I said it right from the beginning. This was not my choice to cut that position. But when we talked, I had to be fair to the towns when they said, your projections, your projections, your projections. Ashley, who I, in my opinion, I'm going to say it just as Deirdre said it, just as Jean said it, has done the most remarkable job I've ever seen in my career on giving data from day one in September. And unfortunately, the truth, some people don't like it. And the reality is, is that we had some issues with special education. So I'm all in favor of anything that will bring us some money and for this position.
Can I make a motion that we place enough money back? Must be about $30,000 or so?
Twenty-seven, five.
Twenty-seven, five, twenty?
Yeah.
For a .5 preschool teacher. And I'll make that motion looking for a second and then we can have more discussion.
Yep. So the motion is on the floor at this point. Is there a second?
There's certainly a second.
Second. Any further discussion?
What I would say is, and I know Mr. Ward knows this probably already, but there are teachers who are full-time teachers that might become pregnant or whatever and would want a part-time job, drop down to a part-time job. I can speak from experience. That's what I did 35 years ago. I was working full-time. I became pregnant, there was a part-time job available, and I picked up a part-time job in the district as a teacher for 10 years until my family was in school again and then I jumped back into full-time. So, I mean, there's lots of ways that this might be able to be done. But rather than cut it all together and then find that we are having difficulty with those students and our typical, our role model students.
Yes, those are the ones.
Good idea, Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, and I think it shows a compromise, right? In that we're willing to collaborate and willing to listen and willing to meet them halfway. So yeah, I think it's definitely, personally, I would support it.
Deirdre, what does that do to these percentages? Very little, I would imagine.
Thank you, very little. But I did calculate the amounts of money, but it's 27,520. It's less than a .0.
Okay.
It'll still, Free Town has to be well out there.
We just need to be able to sell it.
So let me ask the question. Do we then have to reconvene in a special meeting to get the new exact assessment?
I can go down the hall and do that. But I have it broken down between salary, expense, and the total budget by adding the teacher back in.
Right, so there are numbers that have to be.
I don't see that we need to do that.
I could do that tomorrow and then send letters to the communities.
We know there's going to be an impact of 27,000, whatever it is, that's going to change these three numbers at the bottom marginally. And so I think if we're voting on that, we should be comfortable with that. And then we can move this along.
Okay.
Steve?
Steve, go ahead.
I'm going to clarification here. Are we saying that the numbers we're going to vote on will change?
We're saying that the assessment percentages are going to be slightly modified based on the motion and second on the table right now for a .5 FTE preschool teacher.
So keep in mind, when we vote, we can go down, we cannot go up.
That's what we want to do this now. We want to go up. $27,000.
So my suggestion would be is let's, because we have two different votes here, right? You have a salaries vote and everything else vote here. Deirdre, are you comfortable with, while we're voting a total budget number, right?
Yes.
Let's put 27,000 into the salaries line item. And then we can factor out the assessment sheet. But we're basically voting a total budget number tonight.
Right.
Right, we can do that.
Yep.
Yep.
So my suggestion is add the 27 back into the total budget number. Let's add it to the salaries portion of the vote. Right? Because that's the critical one. And then we can send a what this means of the assessment to the two towns tomorrow.
Yep.
Yep.
That's fine.
Yep, okay.
Miss Deirdre, do the math. We're good.
I think that's great that we hear from you, but I want to make sure Deirdre's okay with that. Because she's probably doing the quick math right now.
She's got it all marked up. It's all set.
I'm ready to go, Steve.
You're the best.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second for putting a part-time kindergarten teacher back into the budget. That salary piece is going to go into the salary line item, which we'll be voting as part of the entire budget in a little bit.
I thought we were doing two budget votes.
You have to do a salary and you have to do.
That's right.
Yep, okay. So on the motion for adding the half .5 kindergarten teacher, pre-K teacher, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Wait, you have to, okay, good.
And John, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Understood, got you.
That's what we did that.
So the motion carries? Okay. Thank you.
And then we have to vote the other half.
And you have to vote the other half of the budget.
We just had to segregate the salaries piece.
Right, because John had to, so pulling himself away, abstaining.
Sorry, just to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Deirdre, can you give me the total salary portion of the budget? Or is that what you're presenting to Will right now?
That's what she's presenting. So maybe I.
I'm watching you.
So maybe I screwed this up?
No.
So we were just voting on the?
Just salary.
Just salary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do we need a number for that vote?
That's what you have now.
I have it right now. Okay.
So essentially, Will, that vote, which is to get unanimous consent of the committee of adding that position back in.
Understood. Okay, so now we're voting the number.
We need to officially vote that number.
Yes.
Correct. All right, so I will entertain a motion for the FY '23 budget.
Four.
Four budget, sorry. For 20, so the salary piece of $28,274,906. That total amount would include that 27 and change that we just voted on a couple of seconds ago.
For a half.
For the half-time.
Pre-K teacher.
Pre-K teacher.
I thought we just did that vote.
We did. This is a vote on the number.
The number.
Okay? So we, so Steve made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Thank you, Steve. Training on the job here.
Jen Blum.
Jen Blum. Steve Sylvia.
Aye.
Sherri Baron.
Aye.
Jean Fox.
Aye.
Bob Clark. Steve Owen.
Aye.
Will Stinkwitz, aye. John Burke.
Abstain.
Going to abstain, so we have one abstention. Cool. Next up.
Just to be clear, right? This vote passes 7-0-1.
7-0-1, yes, sir. Yep. All right, so the second part of that is the operational number, correct? Yep, which is?
That's operational, that's total.
Got it. Thank you. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the FY '24 budget, the operational side of the house.
Some of.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Jen Blum. Roll call vote, again.
Hold on, just real quick.
Yep.
Deirdre, can you just confirm what those two numbers would equal just for full transparency sake here?
Yes, sir. I can do that. I have that number circled right here. So those two numbers, so the $28,274,906, which we just voted, which is a salary line item, right? With the operational number of $16,854,74. You add those two up, you have $45,128,980.
I was just trying to see if my math worked too.
So you're asking, you're asking the wrong guy, but Deirdre circled them for me, so we're good. So we have a motion on the table and a second. It's going to be a roll call vote, Jen Blum?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Aye.
Sherri Baron?
Aye.
Jean Fox?
Aye.
Robert Clark?
Aye.
Steve Owen?
Aye.
And I'm going to be an aye as well.
John Burke.
And John Burke?
Aye.
It's an aye, sorry. All right.
So just requiring a motion is unanimous 8-0, correct?
Unanimous 8-0, Steve, yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Sorry, that was a little rocky, I promise.
Steve, go back to whatever country you're in.
No, thank you, Steve. Thanks for being here. All right. Sorry for that, it was a little rocky. I'll get my sea legs underneath me for sure. So next up, I'd like to take the school improvement plans if the school committee is amenable to it so we can get our leadership team out of here in a decent hour. So school improvement plan update, and again, I totally own the fact that I I kind of ask all the time for the check-ins and the progress updates. And I appreciate you guys taking another night away from family to come and do so. So with that being said, Ms. Pennell, you're first on the list.
Let me start as Bethany gets, can come up. I want to remind everybody that for the first time, the district is doing a three-year school improvement plan. That is typical of districts, rather than a one-year. Because now we can really start to look at data and really change and hone in, see where our struggles are, see where our growth is, begin to navigate as opposed to rewriting something every year. It is the typical way schools respond. I don't know what happens in Quincy, but it's what I'm used to.
I think it's just consistent with the DZ regulations. I always knew district improvement plans are on a three-year cycle. I thought schools were on a shorter cycle, but I think it works for the benefit of the principals, which I support.
All yours, Beth.
Thank you. I did pass out. I didn't have enough for everyone, but you should have this. This is just all the data separately if we need to refer to it. So starting with goal one, which focuses on positive school culture amongst all staff and students, where responsibility, team decision-making, and shared educational practices are embedded across all grade levels is the gist of goal one. So so far for progress, we did start the year with some team goals. So our grade-level teams did work together and collaborate, talking about shared practices and responsibility and did create team goals that were driven by data. An example, geometry tends to continuously be a weakness in our math MCAS scores. Granted, our third graders do then, are now at the intermediate schools, so we no longer have them. But again, geometry has been a weakness consecutively for years. Again, granted, those kids are now at Grace, but we did start looking at our math curriculum and started spiraling geometry as one of our priorities and our goals at the beginning of the year as we analyzed that MCAS data. Collaboration during common planning times, we have common planning time every single day. I meet with the staff twice a week. We also have our DESI consultant that comes in every Tuesday and also meets with staff members. We, data analysis is another thing that we collaborate on. We have data meetings three times a year with progress monitoring meetings in between those. We do peer observations, another way for shared practice. Especially, you'll hear me talk about the science of reading and our work with the DESI consultant and our new wonders program. So we have been able to cover classrooms or have our DESI consultant model in classrooms and get coverage where teachers then go to other classrooms to see those shared practices as they plan together and execute those lessons. Math mindset is another grade one, that was a team goal for our grade one colleagues. With the, we do have quite a bit of new staff also at ASWAM sit. So again, those PR observations around math talks, the science of reading and everything that we've been working on at ASWAM, at ASWAM, that has been instrumental this year. Another thing for progress, I feel like with the new leadership team at central office, consistently self-reflecting on myself as part of the school culture was something that I've done probably more than I've ever done before. In terms of my own role, I feel like the change, again, the change in leadership has really opened up my own eyes. has really opened up my own eyes to that, so I did provide a survey at the beginning of the year to my staff about the morale and culture in our building. Am I visible enough? Do they feel like they have a voice? Do they feel like there's leadership opportunities? And then that survey will be given again at the end of the year, as I did take that data and obvious, obviously implement change and opportunities in that respect. So for example, creating leadership opportunities, we have school-wide ceremonies every two weeks where the whole school comes together, and we talk about our core values of responsibility, respect, and safety as kind of the main umbrella. And then under each one of those, we have a ceremony where we focus on a specific topic. We've been really working on that belonging and acceptance of all. At the elementary level, obviously, we start with the basics, right? We need to be kind, we teach that we are different, we are unique. And during those ceremonies, staff and I have been planning those together, so those ceremonies are no longer just run by me, which they have been for the past seven years. This is the first year that we actually have grade-level teams running these ceremonies. So again, those core values kind of live and breathe the culture across classrooms and grade levels in the school. Let's see, sharing out at staff meetings, we provided opportunities where staff members have also done that, math talks was one of them, closing math was another PD that someone had went to that shared out at a staff meeting. Again, the peer observations, basically, teachers are modeling for their peers to come in and see their lessons and then debrief during our common planning time. So that was another thing that we implemented this year to try and get that collaboration across the board. Also, just professional development in general, Terry has been instrumental in opening that up district-wide, so I'm sure you'll hear that in the other plans, but allowing teachers, again, to be leaders, and if they have an expertise or they went to a workshop, to be able to present that to staff members across grades K through twelve, which Mr. Ward and I, we spoke about when we presented our plans, but did that this year, and that was also the first time I have ever done something like that. So I am grateful for those opportunities as well. ASWAMsit goal two really talks about that research-based instruction based on multiple data sources. At the elementary level, we are not short on data, that is for sure, and again, Terry's been instrumental in kind of streamlining that for next year. So, in terms of progress for reading, I'll start with reading. We've, again, it's year five of us implementing the science of reading, which is just kind of an umbrella of research-based strategies, that we've worked with our DESI consultant, Lori Moffo, which has also really helped in terms of ASWAMsit and Freetown Elementary being on the same page in terms of curriculum and the science of reading, where we focus on phonics, phonological awareness, and then comprehension in the second and third grade. Her visits consist of walkthroughs, we use a what-to-look-for checklist that we've also created for small group reading, she plans with staff, she models for teachers. This is the DESI consultant, she's also always sharing articles, she shares podcasts, anything research-based that can help our content knowledge, I feel like she's been really instrumental with. We have the state actually coming on May twelfth, so part of that grant is the state then comes and walks through classes, again, with Terry and myself, to see us actually implement the science of reading strategies. I know the state has already gone to Freetown Elementary, and their visit for us is coming up on the twelfth. We also have on May thirtieth, a showcase where we go, I believe it's Marlboro, don't quote me, but we go and actually see all and meet with all the schools that are part of this grant, so we can see how other schools across the state of Massachusetts are also implementing these strategies that we have been working on for five years. So that's another great opportunity, just to get more ideas, network, and collaborate with other schools. Let's see. Writing and responding to text was another one for multiple data sources. Grade-level teams will collaborate to review writing standards and teacher-created rubrics, and implement consistent strategies. So we have the RACE strategy, which is just an acronym that we now use across grades two and three, to respond to text for MCAS questions. We've also been really using and diving into those wonders, they provide exemplars, which is fabulous for the writing program. So we've been able to use the MCAS exemplars, as well as the wonders exemplars, in terms of looking at student work. So we did create a protocol for looking and analyzing student writing. We also did start to create a way to progress monitor and collect data for writing to see growth. Writing at the elementary level is very time-consuming, because I can imagine if you're a teacher, which some of you have been and are, of elementary writing, deciphering it, and handwriting, and especially five paragraphs of twenty-four students, and, so this is definitely a great three-year goal. We provide writing benchmarks three times a year for the three types of writing, the narrative, opinion, and expository, and then we do meet as grade levels to look at that writing, and basically, right now, we have, we kind of sort it into the different grade, grades, one, two, three, or four, we use a rubric, so we sort it into grades, and then for next year, we really want to work more on meeting with those students that need the intervention and support, doing conferences with them, and setting goals. So that's kind of more of our plan for next year, whereas this year, we've really been working on the rubrics, getting our feet wet with wonders and looking at those MCAS exemplars. Math, again, ongoing cycle over the three years, so we benchmark students using the I-ready, the I-ready benchmark, again, three times a year. The staff has looked at Joe Bowler's work on math mindset, which I have been leading, and again, that's what Mr. Ward and I did a PD on for grades K through twelve. We've reviewed, we used to implement math talks across all classrooms all the time, those kind of lost a little bit of focus, so that was another thing that we've reviewed and implemented this year as well, and that's actually been one of the PR visits that teachers have gone into other classrooms to see what those math talks look like, which is basically just based on strategy. So students explain their reasoning or how they got different answers to a particular problem, so it's really strategy-based. Working with the math specialist this year has been instrumental, I think what's made her so successful is that she is a colleague of ours, so we had that trust with her from day one. We also know her strength is math, so she's been really instrumental, and that has shown some great growth. Spiraling math concepts and organizing data meetings into what we can do differently throughout our tiers of instruction. So that was a different way that we held data meetings this year. So for example, looking at our morning calendar time, every single classroom K through three has that morning calendar routine, you know, so kind of taking a look at something we do every day that we've done for years, and how can we incorporate different things and just spiral them throughout the day. And then another thing is the cubes, again, it's just an acronym, circle, underline, box, and explain, for our math problem solving that we have in all classrooms across grades two and three. And then again, just progress monitoring students between benchmarks and celebrating successes, so that's kind of where we are there. And then our last goal is about encouraging and celebrating belonging diversity and the social well-being of all students in the school environment through building relationships and collaboration opportunities with families and the community. So where we are with that, again, with, it's elementary, so we kind of started with our PTO, our school council, and we do have a social-emotional learning committee that meets monthly, just kind of looking at our hotspots, so like, where could exclusion happen? We've, we've identified hotspots as being recess, lunch, group work time, access to technology or resources for families, and kind of started looking at creating action plans to ensure inclusion for all. So again, that's more work that we'll be doing over the course of the three years. So, you know, one thing, for example, is we assign seats at lunch, the kids like to sit where they want, but assigning the seats eliminates them having to find friends, and then we have like Friendship Fridays, so just small things, again, starting at that five-year-old level of just really talking about belonging and inclusivity. Another thing is the review and analyze of attendance data, so our district report card of last year had twenty-five percent of our students missing more than ten percent of their school year, which is around eighteen days, which is extremely high, we're attributing this to COVID. Two thousand twenty-one, it was seven-point-four, two thousand twenty, it was seven-point-seven. So the data as of today is we have sixty-five students with more than ten percent of their year absent, which is fourteen days absent, which is thirteen percent. So we did go from twenty-five to thirteen, and we still have some time to work on that, hopefully next year it'll be even half again, which will be our consistent norm of around five to seven. We've sent out fifty-three letters, phone calls, so we definitely look at attendance differently this year, we have bi-weekly meetings with the nurse, she's new this year, so it was great, that was her goal, and with our adjustment counselor, we meet bi-weekly, we look at attendance. We've sent out fifty-three letters, phone calls, and meetings that we've had, and we've only had to send out nine follow-up letters, so it's definitely been effective, and for GCF referrals, we've had four. For inclusivity, we also again have the bi-weekly meetings, I won't go through all of them, but again, we just focus on stuff at the elementary level, where grade levels have presented them, so we've worked on growth mindsets, we did a veterans thing to show respect, being unique and different, acceptance of all, and then we've also implemented this year our new social-emotional learning program, which is called Positive Action, and it really just talks about how it's okay to have bad and negative thoughts, we all have them, but how our actions is going to control how we feel about ourselves and affect everybody around us. So again, we've dabbled in that, and it's been one lesson per week this year, we just started that in January, whereas next year, we've already talked to the PTO in terms of topics, where they're going to start to fulfill a, you know, some social-emotional learning books that after these assemblies, because we always have a book that we highlight, the students will, the teachers will then have these books in their classrooms that they can follow along between the two weeks, and then every two weeks continue having those ceremonies. And that is what I have, the data again is there for you, if you have any specific questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Bethany, any, any questions from the committee? Great, moving right along, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, everyone, couple of things before I, first of all, I want to say thank you for your support, as I just heard that open, honest conversation about that part-time preschool position, I, I appreciate it, thank you so very much for that for our students. And secondly, as we heard the young lady speak earlier about the Little Mermaid production, and I, it was, they came by yesterday, our Freetown Elementary, I want to give you the perspective of students, not that I'm going to do a great job with their facial, certainly reactions and what they were showing, but I introduced it, it got started, I turned and I looked at the crowd, now mind you, we're pre-K through three building, and you know their attention span can go anywhere very quickly, all eyes, mouth, jaws to the floor like this, like just amazed at what was happening, and they were like totally, completely engaged for the twenty-five to thirty minutes that that was there, it was the first time we did anything so like that, so thank you, Principal Desert, for doing that and allowing them to come, and obviously, I just think it's fantastic that our students have this now, this opportunity, when they get to the high school, that that's there for them, so believe me, and then the best part is some of the, the, the production crew came out, like Ariel and Ursula came out to, and I thought they were never going to get out of that crowd, because you know, they get in there, and the kids were like, forget it, like they just, it was like they were superstars, it just, it was fantastic, and the kids just loved it, and literally, there was a kid who came by me this morning and said, I'm going to go to that play, that was the best day ever yesterday, so that small little thing, I'm like, that's what it's all about. So, with that, I want to say thank you for that and just allowing that, but certainly, I just wanted to add to it, but I can make my report very quickly, I can just say ditto and go sit down, because what, 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 it is really true what, what Bethany just shared out, so I'm going to try and speak very quickly and get to it, but thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Freetown Elementary School school community here. So much to what Bethany just said, obviously, our goal number one is about ELA, goal number two is about math, so a hundred percent of our students will make progress towards being strategic readers, possessing the necessary skills and strategies to read fluently. What you see here is the domains that we focus on, phonological awareness, phonics, and high-frequency words. So, if you can read through this, it's the overall that we did, and this is the I-ready benchmark, obviously, it's the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, we're close to the end of the year, but you don't see that just yet, but when you take a look at this data, I can't help but be full of pride, joy, hope, optimism, so you can see where they're at with tier one, and I, and I know we've shared in the past, that triangle, that research will tell you that they want eighty percent of our students in that tier one instruction, that they're going to understand, then there's fifteen percent that are going to fall in the tier two, that are going to need some form of intervention, whether it's a small group, teacher table, and then tier three's a little bit more extensive, and you can see the data here, thirty-four percent, and overall in the fall, and check out winter, sixty-four percent, so an increase of thirty percent. So tier two, yes, we want that to go down, so fifty-two to thirty-one, fourteen percent to five, and as I just shared, that triangle, we're almost there, we're there at that tier three, five percent. Now look at phonological awareness, right? I mean, it's, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but we are right where that triangle should be, so in the fall, it was at seventy-one, I mean, check it out for winter, eighty-seven percent, twenty-six, twelve, look at tier three, two percent, and then one percent. So you can see phonics, you can see high-frequency words, and as you can imagine, at the early childhood level, we're looking at those foundational skills, as you've heard this quite often, is that we're getting them to lift the words off the page, so they can comprehend it, right? You've heard us from, they learn to read, and then they read to learn in time, so this is what we're, we're focusing on, and what allows us to have this success, is, this is what Principal Pennault was sharing earlier, there's data analysis, there's consultation with Lori Moffo, let's be honest, I've got a great team of teachers, some staff members there, so just the work that they do every single day, they're prepared for our students, they're looking at work samples, they're, they're working through the wonders program, we know it's new to them this year, right? So there's a little bit of a learning curve, but look at the progress that they've made from understanding the science of reading, and then putting that in with the new wonders program that they're using, so they've started to develop these lesson plans, a week at a glance document, so walkthroughs by me, as Bethany shared earlier with Lori Moffo coming on in, but that tier two teacher table is fantastic, that tier one, where we've got the whole snapshot of everyone being taught, but to me, that explicit instruction of the four or five kids at a small group table is that meat of what's being done, and really focusing on those skills of the students. So, moving to math now, same type of practice here, I just want to make sure I go over the goal, a hundred percent of students will make progress towards being strategic mathematicians, possessing the necessary skills and strategies to read fluently, construct meaning, and monitor their understanding of mathematical problems. You see the work here, again, same type of bounds, so you've got it in the fall, then you get it in the, in the winter, again, seventeen percent, a thirty-six percent jump, brings me some hope, some joy, optimism, that this is where we're going to land with our work, and as Bethany was saying about geometry, we're looking at numbers and operations and algebra and algebraic thinking as the domains that we need to focus in on, but again, with the support of the team and getting a math specialist allows us to have that tier three type of intervention piece that the children can work on, we've got this guided math instructional model, again, where you think of like literacy centers, think of math centers, think of small group instruction that we're doing as well. You heard Bethany share about math congresses, number talks, those are being put in place, use of exit tickets, you heard her say about cubes, so I don't have to go over that again, but we have that piece being done by the EST, the curriculum leaders, discussed as an entire staff, posters in classrooms, so children can references, reference it, excuse me, as they go through the word problems or short-answer responses. Number three goal, again, like Principal Pennault, writing to respond to texts, races, same thing, which is, it's great when you think of, and I know Mr. Strauss, the interconnectedness, right, of schools, so when Dr. Sullivan should be really excited when the children come on up, and I do believe she uses races as well when we get there, so think about, hey, and at, and at FES, we do go kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, so my hope is think two years out, three years out, as this school improvement plan is outlined, if you're in kindergarten, they land in second and third grade a couple years out, they're going to be like, hey, I know the R, I know the A, I know the C, hey, this teacher had it before, so it's that, that consistency that they know, and they've got that familiarity with it, and it allows them to obviously have a tool to answer or respond to a text. So, again, unfortunately, I don't have data, again, but as Bethany shared, we've got progress monitoring that we're looking at the various rubrics, if you will, student work samples, we're looking at student work, we're looking at a high, medium, and low, what's the direct feedback we need to provide that child. What's the direct feedback we need to provide that child to the steps of where we have a writing lesson and now we get to small group instruction again. And we're saying direct feedback to the students. So again, races with support from the FES PTO. All classrooms have been outfitted with a races poster. That's posted there for all of them to have as well. So work is being established there. And the last goal, again, and Mr. Strauss also made great reference to this earlier, that social-emotional learning. Yes, the first part of this goal is about the wellbeing students through intentionally focused on the social-emotional learning. Positive action's already been shared. We have PBIS school, positive behavior intervention support. We have our Fox Den. We have our Fox ticket. We have fine dining. We have these celebrations with our student. Our school council actually leads the incentives for the Fox Den and the PBIS. So that is a mainstay, and we continue to evolve on that. But the other piece is what Mr. Strauss sort of shared about his, what he read out that was wonderful and beautiful and the work that we're doing. And we are developing a culture survey that will be implemented mid-May. So give me some data so we can continue to grow with the diversity, inclusivity aspects of the school in that piece. So certainly, thank you, Bethany, for sort of allowing me to cut back on any of my time. But I know it's a little bit quicker. But again, for sake and purposes, it's much, which is fantastic. So think about our schools together for hopefully success when they go to Dr. Sullivan, work their way up onto the middle school and high school. So any questions that you may have?
Any questions from the committee for Mr. Ward?
Thank you.
Does it comment?
Yep.
I find all of this very exciting, as you can imagine, both of you. And thank you to your staffs.
Absolutely.
You have some amazing staff members. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Dr. Sullivan.
Hello.
Hello.
So we're very excited about the play tomorrow. But I'm hoping that my nine and ten-year-olds have the drop drawers and that, the same kind of reaction. I think we might have a little bit more. It might be a little bit more challenging. But we're excited to walk over. So we hope that everybody can cross their fingers and anything else that there's no rain tomorrow because we'll be walking across the campus. So I, in the packet that I gave you, what I did is I highlighted each goal, the aspect of each goal that I was going to talk about. I would first like to thank Terry, who sat with me. I was having a little challenge in, as far as data. And what I have for you in Goal One is a lot of artifacts more. Where we talked about, one of the things I said, and Terry said, "Yeah, exactly it." And I thought, really, did you, did I say that clearly? The SEL piece of it, you know, I know it. When I see it, I know it. It's happening. We're addressing the social-emotional needs. And I am very thrilled with the support from Mr. Strauss and the committee and everyone on the school adjustment council. I do have some data in here on that updated data that shows you that that still is most assuredly a concern. So I'm thrilled at the potential, strong potential of that, of that position being filled. So to highlight the goal, the piece of the goal, you'll see that I bolded it. The intermediate school staff will be embedding three new strategies in the learning environment, working towards student social-emotional growth in three noted competencies of self-awareness, self-management, and social awareness. But I do have the diagnostic data. And I do want to commend my colleagues at the elementary school and their staffs and the work that Lori Mafo has done. And Mike sort of alluded to it, that we're getting, you know, this is my seventh year in the building, Bethany's seventh year having gone over to Aspen. When I first came, there was a difference. And we've talked about this before. We're really seeing some more uniformity in what we're seeing in the students and what they've been, their exposure. So just briefly, to just get to the data. Obviously, all the social-emotional things, all these strategies and all these things we want to do and want to look at, what our end game is, is this, is absolutely academic success for everybody, academic growth for everyone. But you see, one of the things that Mike and Bethany talked about was like the phonological awareness and phonics. I mean, just look at the tremendous growth they make from fall to winter. But they're already coming in higher than they were, even with the pandemic, which we're trying to stay away from talking about. So I do have that data for you. But in this, in that Goal One, we talked about those competencies. One of the things in my plan that we talked about was coming up with a survey for the staff. And this goes way, for me, goes way back to eight years ago when I was still at the middle school and was working on my study on teachers' efficacy in delivering social-emotional learning opportunities. So I took some, Mike, you're looking at this now. This has ten questions that are all I or in my classroom. So there were a multitude of questions from gassell.org, which is a wonderful, wonderful organization. But these are all just the ones I or in my classroom. So I did poll some of the teachers, not all of them, just to get an idea so that I had some preliminary data of where we need to do some work. The first question, I seek input from families on how to best meet the needs of students', social-emotional needs. Right now, we're at seventy-three percent are most or all of the time. The second, I communicate with my students' families as a way to build positive relationships. Right now, those that were polled, and I polled about twenty, twenty-three or twenty-four teachers responded in the group that I asked. Ninety-six percent, most are always. But there are categories where we have some work to do. So this poll will happen again as we move forward in the three-year plan, which was one of the very first conversations that Alan and I had, I think, in one of our first one-on-one meeting in September, or it might have even been October, the idea of a three-year plan. Because really, when we look back on, or when I look back on it, we were basing these plans on MCAS data, which we did not even have. And we were reporting out to you like, well, you know, we kind of hope, or we think, or everything's looking that way. So I think this is going to be really powerful. And it's going to, three years. So I don't have all kinds of numbers for you, but I have where we're heading. Does that make sense to you? So in that one, I have additionally, the next thing is that piece that is about what's happening in the building as far as emotional issues. So we talked about when, the 2001 data that had one hundred and fifty-two occurrences of students outside of any kind of planned visits. And we are at one hundred and fifty-five now. And we have all of May and June. And that includes what we can anticipate typically happens. My fifth graders have been in the new building for two years. We talk about this transition all the time. There will now be a high, I could, you know, we talk about making predictions. I can make a prediction that there will be more, more issues happening. Fifth graders are transitioning out. It's a very difficult transition to then go to the middle school, you know, the big school, and we talk about it a lot. So again, one hundred and fifty-four, and there's a lot more data in there. I don't think you need me to read it to you. You have it if you have any specific questions. There are more things, you know, more pieces of what that position entails. Students with IEP goals seen weekly, there's twelve. Seen twice a week, there are nine. Students that have access to the adjustment council is currently eighteen. There are forty-one five oh four plans in the building. There were six emergency ones this year. That would be, you know, broken leg, those sorts of things. Typically, we've had John Burke, and you probably, may or may not have heard those things from Jen Burke. But we have had, we have had some unfortunate injuries outside and also at school. Community referrals, twenty-seven. There's some, there's some real big numbers here. Collateral phone calls, sixty-two to date. Then the number, crisis information shared four times. So we've, I've talked about those things a lot of the time. One of the major things that I put some artifacts in because I'm very proud of this work this year, this year, is the seventh year that I've done a book study with my staff. Alan alluded to sending those articles. I have consistently received information from him on our Brackett book that, when he locates different information from Mark Brackett, who is the author of Permission to Feel, the book that we're using. And this one, each year, I think I'm the most proud of the book study, but this one is by far the greatest. So the first strategy that we've implemented, we said we were going to do three. The first one this year is ruler, and that's right out of Brackett's book. So it's, so that the children can recognize their, you know, they recognize, they understand, they label, they express, and they regulate. So it's understanding that there are different moods that we're in every day. It might be different from one minute to the next. It may change. So we have those artifacts. Additionally, I shared some of the information from the Wonders program that has embedded SEL lessons in it. So I just thought you might find it interesting to see some of those. As far as positive action that both Mike and Bethany mentioned, very early in the year, Terry and I sat down and picked out the gems that we saw together. I then had teachers in common planning look at those. So we're pulling out the pieces of that that are working for us. But between that, ruler, and what's embedded in Wonders, we're doing well with those sorts of things. So moving on to Goal Number Two, which I don't have the whole packet, but I think you can see that there's each, my three are very, very much interconnected. The social-emotional piece, the belonging piece, and where we have the attendance, where I talked about that fear of missing out. And I'm very proud of that piece that I think that we are definitely seeing. We have pockets of children that do have the attendance issues, but we are seeing children that don't want to miss school. They want to come in and out, and I will get to that one. So on two, again, the two questions, the two pieces of evidence that I have there, or artifacts that I have there, could just as well be go with the first goal. In an effort to build a sense of belonging for all fourth and fifth graders, we will create, promote, foster, and foster an environment in which all students not only feel they belong, but they are also responsible for helping others feel the same. So as Alan had mentioned, Ramadan, not information that we had ever shared out before. More on autism rather than just saying, we have a day. Let's talk about that day. Let's talk about what that means. Let's make sure that we all know that this is not a one-day-a-year thing that we should be aware of and recognizing and celebrating differences. So those were all things that we have done. That we've basically five things, like Bethany mentioned, at the, you know, we're talking about at the elementary level. Encouraging positive relationships with teachers, working on creating a more positive culture, having value in learning, you know, doing your best work at all times, taking proactive steps towards mental health. We're clearly doing that in all, in all of the goals. And including parents in our decision-making. So the, what I have there is something that we are, will be using either this exact document or something similar to it. And again, because we're only five months into a three-year plan, the zones of regulation, we're sort of looking at as a climate gauge, how students feel, how they're feeling, how they feel, how they're recognizing feeling, how other people may be feeling in a group. I noticed, you know, I noticed how other people are feeling around me. So that's social awareness instead of just self-awareness. So that's Goal Two. Goal Three, summarized in this piece of it for you. The gray staff will create a climate that encourages all students to have the desire to attend school every day, do their best work, and grow their own efficacy as learners. So we have been keeping the weekly data. Each one of the weeks that we did not meet the ninety-four percent, which I would like to up to ninety-five next year, with the hope of that being the expectation for attendance. And ideally, in the third year, and I talked with Alan about this today, you know, ideally, in the third year, ninety-six. But that's a very lofty goal. That's very strong attendance. But on the weeks that we were low, in all but two of the cases, there were, we had high levels of sickness throughout the district. You know, we're, knock on wood, we're leveling off on that. But, or it was around a holiday. So there were travel situations around those things. I identified seventy-one students in, you don't have this data because it has student names on it. But I identified seventy-one students who missed six days of school in the first trimester. And the reason I did that is because of the one hundred and eighty days and ten percent being eighteen. So I think, let's look at six, because that's sending, you know, what's the trajectory going to look like? So I identified seventy-one that had six or more. The highest of the or more is eleven. And of those seventy-one, in the second trimester, we went, we had forty-seven, forty-seven had improvement from the first to the second, significant improvement with fewer by half. So if they had six, they had, you know, many had maybe two or none. And twenty-seven had significant with, you know, a decrease but not as great. And then we're into the, we've only recently started the third trimester, and most are doing quite well. And again, we still do have, you know, there is always going to be that subset that there are issues. And that, again, speaks to the issue of what we identified as part of our first goal, is the emotional disturbances and the high, high, high levels of anxiety, which, again, speaks to the number of five oh four plans that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Any questions or comments for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Mr. Higgins.
Hello.
Hello, sir. How are you?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I have a few updates for you regarding our school improvement plan at the middle school. We have four goals in our current three-year plan. You may remember from our conversation in October, or maybe it was November, discussing the plan. The, one of the four goals actually was a plan, was a goal that had carried over from something we were starting last year, not as necessarily as a part of a goal, but as a project we were working on. So I'm going to start with our second goal, which you can see is the, by June of 2023, each subject will employ newly adopted school-wide rubrics aligned with FOML's learning expectations. So the first year, what we did was we, well, last year, in our first year of the process, process, we identified the elements of the learning expectations or what we thought were going to be, you know, like the soft skills that our students should be assessed on and working, that our teachers should be working with them outside of the skills and facts that they're going to be learning within the curriculum. Those identified academic expectations were to think independently, collaborate effectively, problem solve using higher order thinking skills, and communicate effectively across all disciplines. We created a rubric, the staff collaborated last year in creating the rubric for that, which is in the handout you just received, and then identified the subject areas that they felt were, most lent themselves to the specific learning expectations. So the, for example, in the first one, which is thinking independently, we identified social studies and special education as the two departments that we would, while all teachers would be working on those things with the students, those would be the places that would lean, lend themselves to that focus. At the mid-year, we had added comments to our comments groupings so that teachers could select one of their two comments from the, from the list that would align with these rubrics. And then we were able to compile that data through Aspen, our new student information system, so that we could then gather the data and then create these, these charts that we could then look at and talk about as teachers to what we could be doing differently going forward. And so you can see this was just, this is our first one. This is our baseline. So the data you're seeing here is what we're working on going forward. This will happen every semester going forward. So we had our first one at the end of the first semester, and we will now go at the end of the year, we'll do it again. And next year, then the teachers will start looking at how that data analyzed from semester to semester. Going back to goal one, which was the goal related to increasing the amount of active learning instructional strategies, inquiry-based instructional strategies. This one was based on a data collected last year, which identified about 55% of our classes have active learning going on on any, at any given time. We want to increase that as much as we can because we know that it creates better outcomes for student learning. So it started this year with a, on our, on our very first meeting as a staff, I developed, I think I shared this with you before, I delivered a lesson to the staff in a classroom setting, it was in the cafeteria, but in a classroom format. It was an inquiry-based approach and then used that as sort of the model in saying, you know, this is where we're looking at. You can take nearly any lesson and turn it into an inquiry-based approach by saying what, not necessarily, by taking what you eventually want to achieve at the end, and instead of building, building, building and getting to that and saying, okay, we finished the finish, we've reached the finish line at the end of the lesson, try taking that, let's say that end result and force it into the beginning and for, and have the students engage in that goal, in those goal questions at the beginning and create the stress in their brains that when the answers are found later on in the lesson, they're more, they've already created a structure that they want to learn it, so then they're more likely to retain it. So we've been, we're talking about that quite a bit with the, with staff, the department, curriculum leaders have been working with the, with the departments on this. We started in the first semester with each teacher sharing what they identified as a, their most, I should say, the lesson they're most proud of relative to active learning in their classroom. So within each department, the teachers were doing that in the first semester, and they were just, they were just presenting them to each other in department meetings. In the second semester, then, the idea was to take some, a current lesson that didn't have an active or inquiry-based approach, adjust it, and then present, and then actually run a class with their department, which is a little more difficult, and it gets people out of their comfort zone teaching to their colleagues. That's been going on in the second semester. We will then progress to the next phase of that next year where we're going to start putting departments together. Again, pushing people out of their comfort zone, but also if, when you, while a math teacher may not automatically think that they're going to be able to garner ideas from an English class or an instruction or approach from an English class, oftentimes some of the best ideas are going to come from those situations that they hadn't thought of. So we're going to cross those departments and have those situations where they're going to do the same thing, except they're going to innovate with new lessons and then teach to multiple departments. That is goal one. Our third goal, pardon me, our third goal is related to the Belonging Initiative to increase inclusivity. This year was our data gathering year or is our data gathering year, it continues to be. I share with you some of the data that we've gathered thus far. We've identified that for the most part in our subgroups, our subgroup percentage of discipline aligns for the most part with the percentage of the student body that they align with. So, you know, you know, if it's, if the subgroup is 35% of the student body, for the most part, it's aligning with 35% of the discipline. There is one place where we're finding that that is not aligning and something we need to work with and look at and work on, and that's in our high needs group, where they identify at about half of our discipline and there are about 40% of our enrollment. So it's a, there is, it's not a dramatic change, but it is something we need to look at and see how we can do that better. Another piece that we, we're looking at is attendance by subgroup to identify, not only is it being affected in the case of behavior in classrooms, but are we finding that particular subgroups within our school, their attendance is different, lower than our rate, than our, sort of our average percentage to identify what could be, what could we be doing and where are the things we need to work on? The only place, we didn't see anything dramatic. Our, our all students, we have a 95, 94% attendance rate. The lowest place we saw were two percentage points below at 92%, and that was in students of multirace and students of high needs, two different subgroups slightly lower than our all students. But again, things that we're looking at and things we want to identify, we can do a little bit better. The other piece that we're also looking at is on the other end around curriculum. Where are things like coursework, where we have students who are, I, we have, in a middle school, we don't have a lot of honors opportunities, but we do have accelerated math in seventh grade and then algebra in eighth grade. So we're looking also at how, what are the breakdowns in our subgroups in there as well? And we'll be sharing that data with you over the next couple of years. And finally, the, the fourth goal is related to MCAS or really it's, what we did was we wanted to drill down a little bit and identify what specifically we could improve on. And one of the things that we saw was both in our MCAS data as well as our iReady data, we saw a need to improve our reading comprehension. The benefit of this is that it, it also connects everybody to this in that our math teachers have a part to play, our history teachers have a part to play, our social studies teachers as well. And so reading across curriculums has been a major focus for all the departments and for the teachers. And we have seen some improvement from our fall iReady scores to our winter scores. We've seen an increase of at or above grade level of 5%. And then, of course, you've therefore had a decrease of 5% of students below grade level. And we're continuing to work on those things, but that's, you know, quite a small piece of time. We're talking about the difference between September to January. So 5% is, is not, you know, an enormous number, but we're talking about four or five months. So that's what we're looking at. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Higgins. Any questions from the committee for Mr. Higgins at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Desert from the high school.
Thank you. It's illuminating to hear all of that and for my many years in the district, not always in this position, of course, but just to hear, you know, the work together of the elementary schools and how it's slightly different, but it just, it's just leading up to, you know, so, you know, really just more focused goals. So goal one for us is to increase inclusive practices and programming to support all learners. And our view is by doing so, we will increase our meeting proficiency on MCAS, but also create more of that belonging that we've heard. One thing that we're very proud of is our testing and tutoring lab, TNT. And this is a tier three intervention that has continued to grow. So we talk about the, the cost of special ed and, you know, all those referrals. We've found a way to meet those needs for students who do not qualify or we have not tested for that by pairing them with a certified teacher that they meet with every day. So instead of an academic lab, it's a very focused one, and we did some data on that. And we're able to see for the first time in all the years that we've had it, it's just about five or six, for the first time, we put our ninth graders in immediately. So instead of waiting to see our ninth, some of our ninth graders pop up with failing grades, any student who had had a failing grade from the middle school was immediately enrolled. So we've gone from 34 students in TNT for semester one to 56 in semester two, and some have graduated from it. You know, they're doing much better. So we still struggle a little bit with our grade nine as they're finding their footing. We did some data collection to see how many students, what was the percentage of students that were passing all their classes? And our grade nine has gone from 78% down to 54%. And there are some reasons for that, that third term dip, and we're still working with them. And we find that some may need more of a referral and will go to a BBS T process. Grade 10 is where we've found great success. We're looking at how they did in ninth grade compared to 10th grade, but we have 10th graders and we've grown from, we've doubled from 12 of them at the beginning to 24 in there now. And we've gone from 25% who are passing all classes to 62% of them. We've found some real success there. 11th graders, although they're smaller numbers, 33% up to 67%. And our 12th graders who need a little bit of help, they've gone from 50% to 80% of them passing all classes. So we're pretty happy with that. Some of the other things that we do to support students so that they're able to learn is the care closet. That's another new addition this year by the entire guidance department and our school nurse. And that is actually a closet that has been created, and the list is huge. It provides clothing, every bit of clothing any student could need. Personal hygiene products, not only used for that day, but they can take home, school supplies and food and water for students who are in need during the school day, but even to take home later. And they estimate anywhere from three to 10 students access that every day. So that has been helpful to keep them in school. And our SELF program does that as well, our social emotional learning program we call SELF. We're creating the baseline data for that. We have an excellent new educator in there who is tracking very well how students utilize or access the program, how long they're in there, setting goals so they're spending less time and going back in. So that's one other thing. We continue, of course, with our student support teams every week. That's the assistant principals, nurse, guidance counselor, SRO, that kind of thing. And another inclusive practice that we're very happy about, and I thank the leadership team for supporting this because we jumped into it immediately. And because of that, we now have four new classes that are integrated for life skills and regular ed students. And that is an integrated movement and fitness class, engineering, they're going to love this one, maintenance and repair, art as a semester class, and an integrated music class. We've had our students sign up for that. So we're super excited for other students to see it and say, I want to do that too. You know, so, so those are some of the ways that we hope to continue to support students. Our second one is focused more on, you know, classroom engagement, authentic learning experiences. This year, we created think tanks. So we have common planning time once a week. So we have a blue CPT, which is department-based, a red CPT, which is department-based, and the special educators come into that, and then purple CPT, which is, is building-based. And we used it a lot in the last year for NIASC preparation. This year, we used it for think tanks. So based on goal setting by educators and what they talked about, we created three of them. One of them was grading, revisions, retakes, and student self-evaluation. And Mr. Glant has facilitated that. We had one based on drilling down to skills post-COVID, and that's been by a teacher, Laura Barnicot. And the other one is student choice, engaging the learner. And I've run that one and modeled, you know, different ways that you can engage and remember that it's your class, you set the tone, you're the person engaging and doing that kind of thing. So we had three, three meetings for that first group. So every educator in the building chose one of the three think tanks, and they did it for three weeks. And then we did a second iteration, and so every person in the, every educator has done two out of those three. So we're building upon that, and we already have some plans for next year for our professional development. I've been working with Terry on that about doing a student for the day, having the teachers go through classes, having it modeled to them. And we have a book that we're purchasing, which will be a book study for all faculty about 50 strategies to boost cognitive engagement. And what's really great is that, you know, it does the Bloom taxonomy, and it really just step by step shows, yes, we're hitting this and we have to do that, and yes, this content, but how about going towards really training the thinker? So we also have curriculum leaders who have been kind enough to take it on as a professional practice goal, to do walkthroughs of their peers. So beyond what they used to do for their department, they're now going to see all sorts of other ones. And we're making toolboxes of engagement strategies, revision policies, all of these are to build that capacity. So there's other things mentioned here that do that, but I think that that's really the major part that we've done so far is a baseline collecting year. The last goal, smart goal three, is around attendance. And we knew we needed to focus on that, especially coming back after hybrid and COVID. So we did some baseline data on excessive and chronic absences, excessive being 10 to 17, and chronic being 18 plus. So last year, we had 21% were excessive, 12% were chronic. This year, if you skip down to the part, it's not in yellow for you, but kind of gray, we're projecting, knowing that we haven't finished the year, 15% for excessive, which is reduced by 6% from last year, and projecting for chronic, 5%, which is reduced by 7%. And some of the work we've done for that, I mean, granted, there's been less sickness, although that hasn't been perfect, but we've sent out our chapter 22 letters in danger of losing credit, we've sent out 162 of those. We've had four attendance appeals where they come in with a parent, the student talks about what they've done, and we come up with a plan for how they'll move forward. Those have been very effective, as well as those SST meetings and phone calls all the time from guidance and from assistant principals. We find that one of our bigger issues to hit, and if you asked my staff, they'd say tardies, tardies, tardies. So we have some things to work on that. Certainly the, the traffic isn't great, but I don't hit the traffic when I come in. And maybe the stop signs will help a little bit for that traffic flow, but we have kind of the carrot and the stick. So we have been focusing on the punishments according to our handbook to do that and really laying that out, especially for next year to have those juniors really understand there's that, there's that stick. But there's also a carrot. I credit Katie Santos, our, our new assistant principal, who came up with an incentive program. And every week we put, we have one person who's just spit a wheel, and then we look to see if they've had any tardies that week. If they don't, it's a free ice cream. They're in, you know, the superintendent's corner, they're in the Laker news. And for the semester for juniors and seniors, who are our biggest culprits, they, if they have not had it for the entire semester, we gave out a homecoming ticket, gave out a yearbook, we gave out a prom ticket, and we have a big summer gift basket coming for the next one. So I'm not sure the carrot has, has had as much effect as we want. We might have to have more stick, but, you know, we're trying to create, you know, this situation of, of responsibility, resilience, and all of these going together to support students wanting to be there at school. Those are the goals.
Thank you, Ms. Desert. Any questions or comments from the committee? Steve?
I would just say thank you, and I appreciate your time. It's, it's just impressive to see school improvement plans that sort of, you know, reflect both academic rigor, but also supporting the social emotional needs of students. But more importantly, you know, hearing about a book study or the Little Mermaid or Mr. Ward's phonological awareness improvements, or Bethany's exclusion zone and ceremonies, or Jack talking about inquiry-based learning, or you talking about the care closet, means that you have passion and through you to your staff, it's, it's great leadership, but it, it brings that document to life. And, and I think it's a tribute to what you do every day, and it's appreciated, and it's personal. And we talk about, Ms. Parent talked about action plans, but the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan is an action plan, and I think you provide evidence and a plan for monitoring. And I love the three-year cycle. I wish that was something that we could adopt through a different school committee. But I, I think, hearing you talk about your school is, is, it comes out your passion for what you do, so I appreciate everything. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Couldn't agree more, guys. I mean, I, we appreciate you, and I know it's another night out of your, your week and, and another kind of task on your plate to get the extensive reports to us and the data. So speaking on behalf of many, we, we really truly do appreciate you, and we understand that these schools go as you go, right? And just Steve hits a nail on the head how passionate you are when you get up and speak about the, the very evident differences that you guys are making is, is awesome. So, so just thank you so much. Thank your staffs from us, please, and continue the good work. So, thank you.
I do want to say I applaud them. You know, new administration is always difficult. They looked at me funny with three-year plans. They didn't quite understand it. I think they're understanding it now, but it's really about where's your evidence? And their presentation tonight was about evidence, and it's not about talk. You know, you just look at phonological evidence from fall to winter, things are working. And now we have three years to continue to work on it and see growth. Attendance is absolutely connected to belonging. If students feel safe in a building, they will come to a building. And, and so I applaud you for the work you're doing on that. So they've done a great job. And Terry's support with all of it as well.
Thank you. Great. All right. So I've thoroughly carved up this agenda tonight, so we're going to go back to item number seven, acceptance of meetings for April 5th.
Thank you. You can go.
2023. Hi, folks. Thank you so much. Have a great night. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of minutes for April 5th. I have a motion for Mr. Clark and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Jen Blum is going to abstain, so it passes.
Because I was here for the beginning, and I love Desi and Terry, so I'm abstaining in part.
Yep, yep.
Please.
We're passing.
We're passing.
Absolutely.
Hope it was good.
Perfect. Other presentations to the school committee, nothing under that section as of tonight. Great. Public participation, we have Ms. Ning. Crystal, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I just want to say, I haven't watched a school committee meeting in a long time. I watched last week's school committee meeting, and let me just tell you, after my son's death, and I appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate all of you. John, Sherry, you came to the wake, thank you. And I just appreciate, Ellen, everyone, thank you. But moving forward with this, I was disappointed, I'm very sad watching people get up there and talk. I have other children coming to this school. My family is very multicultural, and I was pissed, and I'm still pissed off. So what I've done is I've contacted Desi. I've sent the videos in from the May 22nd, when that family first was upset about the racial issues, and the last meeting on 4/5 to 23. I have a meeting with Desi on Friday. We were hoping to get it done today, but just couldn't. We were hoping to get it done today, but just couldn't do it. I have also contacted the Attorney General's Office for Civil Rights, the Civil Rights Division. Because let me tell you, this is ridiculous. This is 2023. That mother, I would say her last name, but I don't know what it is. I don't want to mispronounce it. I have never been so disgusted in my whole life. And let me tell you, it's taken me a lot to come out here and to come to a school meeting today. So I will do everything in my power to make sure this does not happen to my children. You know, my five-year-old, she is Caucasian. Does this mean when she goes to school, she'll have white privilege? And her younger brother, who is half Dominican, will not? I'm just saying that. I'm just so disappointed. You know, everything else that went on in that meeting, your personal lives, you deal with what you need to deal with. But I just can't say that this can't go on anymore. And you have a leadership committee. Is there anybody who is of a different race on that committee? Any parents? Anybody who can, you know, give some sort of other information, guidance, the NAACP, more political than anything else? I just, it's just shameful. And I, I just can't say enough. We've lived in Lakeville for over 25 years. I love my community. I love my neighbors. Everyone has been really kind and wonderful to us the entire time we live there. My oldest daughter, who is of my complexion, did not go to school here. She went to private school. As you know, my son did go here. We had our issues with that, but it had nothing to do with race. But to think that this is still happening, and that poor family has dealt with it for the last five years, and it just, it's unacceptable. So like I said, I have a meeting with Desi on Friday. And I'm waiting for the AG's office to call me back because I know that the AGs, I am not filing a complaint. It is just that they offer teachings and guidance to school systems to come out and to just get everybody on the same page. Because, I mean, this just can't go on. I mean, you know, five years? I mean, and no investigations? And whether or not somebody on the school committee's son is there, is that why it's being brushed under the rug? I don't know. But there needs to be an investigation. And that's all I wanted to say. Because, well, no, actually, no, there's just one more thing. But I mean, there are people leaving the town. In my other job, I am a family partner, and I help parents with children with mental illness. And I went to this home, and this little boy said to me, he goes to AES, and he has this big giant Afro. And I told him, you know what? You're the only one that can rock that, because I know I couldn't. And he's, and I, and he were talking about his Afro. And he said, oh, well, they just don't like it at school. And I said, well, did anybody say anything to you? And he says, yeah, the kids say something to me. I said, did you tell the teacher? And he says, I did, but it doesn't make a difference. And I said, well, why doesn't it make a difference? And his mom looked at me, and I go, I said, don't get me started on the whole going up the chain, but I will. So I said, well, you know, I said, you talked to the teacher. I said, you just keep going until you get an answer. I said, because with that big old fro, if he wants to wear his hair that way, you can wear your hair that way. You know, and just little things like that. I think our kids after COVID have had enough to deal with. And having another layer of things to worry about is just not fair. And I know life is not fair. But it's just very sad. And it made me very sad. And I don't know if I should say, thank you for getting me out of my house. But, you know, just, I just wanted to be heard because this just made me very angry. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public participation at this time? No? Okay. All right. So moving down to 10C, we have the second reading of the ELA curriculum. I do believe a vote is required tonight. So.
Jack and I are going to quickly address a couple of things.
So Terry and I are going to cover a few things to just, there were some questions last week, or the last meeting when we were talking about the Amplify curriculum. One of the first questions was around the budget for it. We've identified that the grant that we received from Desi was $29,000. We have, within our building budget, $20,000 for the current, in the current year, for curriculum materials. And then we have ESAR curriculum funds of $13,000. So we have the funding in order to not only purchase it for now, but for a multi-year contract. We, when folks, when thinking about it from the perspective of, we also talked a little bit about how that curriculum, does that tie students to their Chromebooks even more than we're already using them? And the answer really is no. In a way, it is a, is a tool that increases and improves collaboration and discussion around from students, but uses it as a tool in the same way you might use a textbook, so that it has questions or it has that activity that they engage in, and then they break off, close the books, and now they're talking with one another. And they're using it only as a, as a launch point to those discussions that we're having on a regular basis. Our teachers wouldn't be interested in a curriculum resource that was so restrictive and defining that they would have to completely change the way that we're doing things now. It accentuates what we do. It doesn't really change what we do as teachers in the building.
Just a couple of days after our presentation last time, I was in a couple of ELA rooms at the middle school. And the kids had computers out. And it's exactly like Jack was just explaining. There was a computer out, but the kids were turned like this, talking, writing, then looking at the computer. And that's really how the teachers foresee using that resource. So. The other piece that we wanted to make sure that we addressed was the comment around the capacity of the program to translate to multiple languages. So we are fortunate that we have, most of our EL students are Level 2, Level 3, and exiting the program. And so they actually speak English fairly well in the classroom. So the goal of that tool is more for the parents to be able to access at home. So we have students that their parents speak only one language at home. However, the students have been learning English. And there was four points that I wanted to point out from research. And that is that when we are supporting our English language learner's capacity for being multilingual learners, it's important that we teach language skills across the curriculum. And we emphasize the productive language that we're using. And this curriculum has sentence frames. And we showed those sentence frames in one of the slides last time. But that's one of the highest tool, you know, the most compatible tools for our EL students to use productive language and translate from their, their home language to English. And then the third thing that they, that research suggests is the use of multiple modalities, which this does. It has written, it has video, it has the conversational talk built into the curriculum. And then finally, the last thing, and it's the one that we probably don't think about, but not to be afraid of technology and to incorporate students' native languages. Oftentimes, when I meet students that are, that have just moved here from the, from another country, I will take out my phone and do simple sentences on Google Translate, just to have some sort of conversation with them. This platform allows us to do that even more extensively by providing those vocabulary words in other languages so that the parents can be involved in the education as well. And I wanted to remind everyone, community and, and the committee and our staff, that really bilingualism is our goal. We are not looking to replace their language. We are looking to enhance their ability to speak multiple languages. Because that is a, they are way ahead of us that only speak one language. So this program will support that multilingual learning for our students.
You just looking for a motion?
Yep. At this point, yeah, we're entertaining a motion to accept the curriculum as presented.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the?
Amplify ELA.
Amplify ELA, for I'm confused with wonders. On the Amplify ELA curriculum, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carried. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. The teachers will be very excited. And we already have implementation plans and motion.
Well, it's a good thing that it went your way, then.
Well, I didn't buy anything, but we had the plans and ready. So the teachers will be able to have that material before they leave for the summer.
And thank the committee again for all their hard work. They did a great job at that thing last, at our last meeting. Moving to new business. Does FR, is our school committee meeting calendar on there? We don't have anything to do with the calendar, right? We've already voted that.
That's not, that's school committee meeting calendar when you are going to meet.
Yeah, when we're all going to be together.
But we can push that off to the next meeting if we'd like to.
We may want to talk about.
Yes, that would allow us to maybe have a conversation regarding.
We certainly want to look at trying to strategically reduce some meeting times.
Okay, so we can, we can push that.
Yep.
Moving down to director reports. Oh, Jerry, go ahead.
Don't we usually meet in August, just to?
We do.
Just to get going? And I think last August, we had some staffing issues.
It's late August, but we do.
It's late August, right. So I think we probably need an August meeting here. Not that anybody wants another meeting, but that's one of the most important ones.
That's the launch.
To make sure that we are, no, the launch, that's right.
And the launch. Yeah.
Okay, so we can push that for now.
Yeah.
Director reports. Deirdre?
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry.
No, it's okay. No, it's all good. We appreciate you.
Thank you. I've submitted my first report to you. At the time I wrote this report, I had exactly 46.25 hours in the district. One of my first goals and objectives was certainly to meet with the superintendent and allow staff to fix my schedule and allow staff to know when I am here. I really wanted to do two fixed days, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So you'll know I'm here Tuesdays and Thursdays. That third day, if you will, is a flex day for any time the superintendent needs to have me in a particular meeting or the night meetings or things like that. So my schedule for the district's Tuesdays, Thursdays, and kind of a flex day dependent on need. I spent a lot of time with Kara. Went through everything we could possibly think of going through. It was a wonderful professional experience after being retired for six or seven years, just to jump right in. And the two of us were just like talking and discussing things. It was one of the most incredible experiences from being, again, retired. And knowing that things are the same in fund accounting is just a wonderful thing. So I appreciate that time very, very much with Kara. I also took the opportunity to reach out to the towns, to say hello, to introduce myself. It was wonderful to not only reach out to Tom Hass, Todd Hassick, but Todd was also on my interview team. I had hired Todd years ago in Amesbury to help us align our chart of accounts with the department. So it was quite fun to not only see him, but then pick up the phone and say, hey, Todd, what's happening out there? And let's talk and regroup a little bit. So I had the opportunity to reach out to the towns. Additionally, I reached out to the Department of Elementary and Secondary of Education, to Rob O'Donnell. Rob is a friend. Rob lives in Newburyport. I did a lot of work with Rob. So I talked to him. Can you check out the district? What do you need from us? Where are we? How are things going? And so we're in contact in that regard. I spoke with Masbo. We're a Masbo organization, as you know, where our active membership is still active, even though there's been a transition. That allows me to go into Masbo and take any of the, all resources that are posted on that group. So I've reached out and been able to assess, or access, rather, some resources there. Also, I'm very familiar with your legal counsel. Mike Long and I go back a little bit, but it's all good. It was very professional, and there were no wishes. So your legal counsel is on my radar, and I have your auditors coming in to see me next Tuesday at 9:00 to go over everything audit. Where are we? Any concerns that they might have, reportable conditions, material weaknesses, any goals and objectives that they have that they think that we can be moving forward? They're coming in to talk to us. School building and facilities, I can't thank Greg enough. We, Greg Goodwin, we work everywhere in regards to the school. The only thing I didn't do is go on the roof, but he did show me a new access panel to get there if I really wanted to venture. We're meeting with various vendors on things that Greg is working on and concerned about moving forward. So we have some immediate goals and objectives in regards to capital and facilities management. We have the $100,000 grant for the playground that we want to work for, work towards, for spending down by June 30th and at least ensure that that award is utilized. And we're really focused on septic water, domestic water in the campus, and some HVAC deficiencies that we're aware of as well. Greg and I are on that, and we're really excited about some of the things that we see there. I put down here under building and facilities my tour at AES. It was grandparents' Day. And if you haven't heard Penny Lane sung by kindergarteners, it was the best thing ever, I have to say. Over to FES, we went in Little Fenway. And the building was just a lot of fun to go in and see. So I really appreciated that from Greg. So I really appreciated that from Greg. The business office, we're starting meetings. We're meeting periodically. The group got together. I gave everybody a Deiter folder. So the Deiter folder is to go on your desk. You're supposed to put everything that you've ever wanted to know, not about Deiter, but that maybe Deiter can help you with. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, people will come in with their Deiter folder. Here are the things that I'm struggling with, I need help with, I'd like to understand, I'd like to learn. And so those are the kinds of things that we're doing with the business office. Our goal in the business office is to close out FY '23 with grace, is how I refer to it. Systematically evaluating where we are and where we need to get in a very systematic and deliberate approach. That, again, is our main focus as well as moving forward the FY '24 budget as voted by the school committee. I'm doing a little PSA for the business office, a public service announcement. We have our open enrollment for health insurance for all of our employees, all of our retired employees that aren't Medicare eligible, and all our Medicare-eligible retired employees. So we were able to work together as the business office, go through our health insurance rates, our categories, making sure that we had open enrollment notifications to all of our employees. It's critical because, as you know, our deductions for May pay for June. June pays for July. And when you have increased rates and you're a 10-month employee, you've got to double up on your May and June payments. So we were able to reach out to all 22K employees and find those few that they may need to take a look at where our deductions... So I'm very pleased that we were able to do that on behalf of staff. The business office just jumped right in. And if you're watching or you're an employee of the district, your open enrollment period is now for the next two weeks. We're working with transportation. You've voted 23 buses, not 24. We're graduating the data that we currently have. We're moving students from buildings in a temporary work environment. We're moving the data so that we can assign students to stop from where they live to the buildings that they will be going to next year and try to route based on actual data. Whatever that routing shows, we're going to be presenting it to you as far as what that might look like. So that's work that Steve and the superintendent and I and Ken Renz...
Renz.
Yes, thank you, are working on. The superintendent talked about the window project. We had our first Zoom. I was out on vacation, but I was able to get in there. Had a wonderful, wonderful meeting about what the project is, when substantial completion is. We're getting our first schedule kind of solidified over the next week or so. The superintendent reported out the test windows were done. And we're looking to understand the summer impact for summer programming, the summer impact for the office, and any impact for September and October until substantial completion. So that's very exciting as we're talking about that project. And lastly, we're looking to understand where we are in the political legislative process with House Ways and Means just issued, regional transportation increase, because we're going to get it this year 100%. And no, it's going to the Senate where it'll be discussed and debated. The other discussion and debate at the Senate is this additional $30 per pupil that typically comes out of the Senate. But we're at foundation this year. And other districts that are... We're at foundation, got no increase in Chapter 70. So that's where the tug is going to be at the Senate. So I'll be able to continue to update you on the Senate and legislative process moving forward. That's my...
Any questions, Deidre, at this point? Baron, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is for Deidre or for Mr. Strauss. Then we get an update on the Magnanice water situation. A letter went home to parents.
For the Mag...
Was it Magnanice? Magnanice? Magnanice, there we go.
Magnanice.
Magnanice.
So Greg worked all week. By law, that letter has to go out. We don't have a choice. DESI, once it's reported, that... Forgive DESI. Department of Health says you have to post it, prove you posted it. We posted over break. We've had two tests since and everything's fine.
Have we notified parents? That it was fine?
We don't legally have to, but we can. That's fine.
I had one question. I had somebody question.
We had no calls, so...
A quick update, which is we've got safe water again.
We had safe water before.
Well, that's not the way that the letter read that went out according to the parent. But there were no... There were no kids at school, so that wasn't a problem.
And that sometimes can be the shift of the chemical imbalance as well.
I see. Thank you.
Steve.
Was the water system obviously shut down for student use, at least at the early part of this week, as we returned from vacation?
No.
Okay.
Why was there a concern?
I just may have bad intel. But as long as they're restored and...
Oh, yeah, all the waters. Been fine.
I can tell you were chasing a domestic water situation at the campus where we're typically going through 14,000 to 15,000 gallons per day. Per day. And we've added five of the water stations so that we were anticipating that's going to go up a little bit. But we're looking at 30,000 gallons per day right now. So we have gone through and investigated literally where potentially that leak is. And we're looking at green grass growing in certain areas. We're looking at maybe some water coming up from ponding. And last week, we had a company come out from Connecticut to do some infer... I'm going to get this wrong. Utilizing a technology to determine underground where potential breakage is within our system. But that's going on in the campus right now. So we're working with water monitoring from a couple of different perspectives right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Deidre, thank you so much. Anything else before we go to Terry? Or Ashley?
Mine, too. Because Chuck, the bulk of mine was the second reading of Amplify ELA. I just listed... This is all update material for you. You can peruse it at your leisure. It is nice number that we have. I've been working on grants this year. We have $159,505 in grant awards this year, as well as the healthcare grant that was $100,000 that was referred to for that care closet. So we... I got two new grants that I'm reading through today to look at to see if they're viable for us. So we continue to look for ways to support funding in the district.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Jen?
So the care closet, the funds are coming from a grant?
Yes.
I wanted to ask.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I only have an acronym because I don't have it memorized. So it's a CSHS grant.
It was through the Wellness Committee with the nurses, right?
Pardon me?
It was through the Wellness Committee with the nurses.
This grant is applied for every year. And the goal this year was for it to build the care closet, as well as some other funding and PD opportunities for nurses.
I will say there is legislation on Beacon Hill right now for at least the personal hygiene products for schools, prisons, and shelters.
So we did, as a part of that grant, do some purchasing in that area so that we would be...
Perfect.
Yep, I actually looked up that law the other day and made sure that I knew when it was going to affect because Joan and I were talking about her spending. So we are... Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
And you know, Ashley, I think we have to start moving you up the agenda because I think by the time you get to your question, everyone is tried. I wanted to say I appreciate your patience here dealing with us. Last, but certainly not least.
Luckily for all of you, I don't know if this came as a surprise or relief, but my report told me one. And like I said earlier, I know it's so sad. I was like, I feel terrible doing this. But like I said earlier, there have only been seven days in session since April 5th meeting. So I was not going to just repeat evaluation and special ed numbers that would be the same as my last report. So I really chose to focus on some positive updates and announcements that have either occurred or that are coming up. So one of which is that I know we spoke about the CPAC event that was supposed to happen in April, which unfortunately got canceled due to illness of the presenter. But we have secured a rescheduled date of Tuesday, May 9th, right here in the ARHS library. And that is going to be through Dr. Marcy Atkins. She's out of Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I know her personally, not professionally, but I know some of our families, our special ed families, work with her professionally. So she came highly recommended and she's going to be doing a presentation on anxiety and defiance and how to help your kids at home. Because things that we're seeing in school is that parents are very frustrated, tired about their kids coming home. They're exhausted, they're tantruming, they're breaking down, they're overwhelmed, and they don't know what to do to help them. And it's really impacting the family dynamic. So we think that her presentation coming in is going to be very helpful. So this is not just open to special education families. It's open to the community, the public. And we'll be doing lots of advertising as we did prior, but we'll continue to do so building up to the presentation in a couple of weeks. Unified track, first home meet was yesterday, 4:25. The weather was not stellar, but the meet was fun. It was against Somerset Berkeley. We did get a chance to catch a sneak peek because we did have another meeting that was coinciding because the time was at 3:30. It got shifted instead of 2:30. But it was a successful meet. They had their first meet on April 4th at Fairhaven High. Well, it was at Cushman Park but versus Fairhaven High. And that was also a success. And we're looking forward to the upcoming events, which I'll continue to share out with the committee as the events arise. Really exciting news, Special Olympics has been scheduled. We had our first Zoom call last night to start talking about the planning process. I think the only downfall is that on May 19th, our upper... Our older population is participating and it's the same day as our junior, senior prom. And we do have six of our special students at the high school attending the prom this year, and they are going all out. So it's going to be a very exciting but yet exhausting day for them. And I guess the even better news is that because Special Olympics has such a large turnout in the last couple of years, they now have to split it into two events. So they have an elementary focus and then they have an upper focus because we just have so many participants, which is awesome. So I did put the locations there. I'll be updating you with more information to come as we hash out the details. We'll be getting T-shirts. There'll be pizza. There'll be a DJ. We'll have transportation, and I welcome any of you to come and attend. And like I said, I'll share out the details of time. So if you would like to stop by, it'd be... It's a great time.
Is it ideal?
It is, yeah. And I even... I have my daughter usually miss school for... To attend as well because she loves helping out, so. Transition meetings are also in process. We're starting next week. These transition meetings happen from 3rd to 4th grade, 5th to 6th grade, 8th to 9th grade. So any transition year that changes building, we do them with parents, special education teachers. We open it up to all of our special education families, and then they opt in for a meeting if they would like one. It's successful. It's meaningful. It's effective. It's been... We've been doing it since I came on board seven years ago, and it's... We've just had a lot of great feedback. We also include Bristol Plymouth, Old Colony, and Bristol Aggie and do transition meetings with them as well so that they can meet with our staff and our parents to have discussions about what high school is going to look like in those settings and also what the special education needs of the students are. And then last but not least, extended school year. We are planning away. Our letters have been sent home. Responses are coming in. We are seeking personnel to work the summer. We are getting lots of interest, which is good, more so from paraprofessionals and teachers. So another public service announcement. If you're out there and interested and would like to apply, please email me. And we will talk about our opening positions. It is a five-week program, so it will run July 10th to August 10th. It will run simultaneously with Terry's Jump Start Program. And we are in the process of meeting with facilities, transportation, and then all of the other programs to just talk about the logistics of the running program throughout the summer. So we're excited. There's lots of good things coming. Spring, obviously, as you know, countdown, right? We're all counting down to the summer, but it is the busiest time. So there's some positives where, you know, the numbers seem to be creeping up. Evaluations are getting finalized. Meetings are definitely vamping up, but these are the positives that we can take away. That's it.
Any questions or comments for Ashley? Ms. Belay, thank you so much. Moving on, subcommittee updates. We can whip through these. Regional Finance Committee, any updates at this time? I know there was a meeting that was put.
Cancelled.
It was cancelled, actually.
Has it been rescheduled at this point?
No.
Okay. Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, no updates at this time, but I know that committee needs to get together here as the clock's ticking on the school year. So we'll make sure to schedule some time. Wellness and Health Committee, Sherry, any updates there?
No.
Okay, no updates at this time. Policy Subcommittee Updates?
Nope, just working on scheduling another meeting.
Yep, none at this time. Capital Committee, I know no updates at this time, but there are... We need to get...
There will be a meeting set up. We have received our seven RFPs. We're going to meet with the Capital Committee at Brian Day Tuitt. And discuss what next steps are in terms of hearing from, whether it's seven or four or two, that's to be decided.
Yep.
But we're excited about that.
Great, thank you for that. Any other business that may probably come before the meeting?
No, you get the schedule here now.
I just want to bring to everybody's attention, as far as the reorganization, on the paper that we have here, right in between my name and Sherry's name, it does specifically say, please note during an election year, the role of secretary cannot be up for reelection.
I thought so.
Yeah, because when Cheryl reached out to me, she said, you can't.
Okay.
So we have to switch roles again, which is why, Sherry, you had to do... Because I was secretary and I was up for reelection. And Cheryl had called me and said, you cannot do the totals. And there is a note right here in blue that says, please note during an election year, the role of secretary cannot be up for reelection.
Okay, so we need to...
We need to redo that.
I think before we do that, we should look at the law because I'm told in Lakeville that the district clerk has to certify the vote, and it can't be someone who is on the ballot.
I think that's true, but I don't think... This is a case where both of those things could be true, right?